Good evening and welcome to the August 6th meeting of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustments. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and two alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board of adjustments, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. There will be an exception tonight. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merit of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at the town hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. Tonight, we have a full five-member board. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the zoning board of adjustment tonight, you have the right to appeal to Superior Court. However, before appealing to Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I would like the board and staff to introduce themselves.
I'm Joe Feminow, alternate.
Glenn Stewart, vice chairman.
Kathy Hooton, chairman.
Gail Abrek.
Vivian Bondo.
Joanne Duffy.
And Brian Rose, I'm the planning and zoning administrator.
So, that being said, I want to attain a motion to approve the minutes from the July 9th meeting?
No move.
Second. Okay. The motion in and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Abstaining.
No abstentions, one. That's a vote four, zero, one. Yep. Okay. This evening, I am going to request that we take one of the applications out of order. In reviewing the applications, I thought that this was a pretty simple one for all of us to look at it and decide for ourselves what we feel. So, at this time, I'm going to just say to you that I'm going to ask Mr. Robert Tremblay, application to be heard at this time. Is there anybody on the board that...
When was this decided?
I talked to Brian today and yesterday, and I mentioned to him that I was going to request that the board consider that. And I also asked Patty to call Mr. Tremblay to see if he could be here at seven o'clock, which they have done. The other thing I think I'm going to mention at this time, too, is I understand that there are quite a few abutters here or people interested in the Bel Air nursing home application. We will get to that, and I want them to just stay here while we decide what we're going to do with Mr. Tremblay's application.
The Bel Air is simple, isn't it?
No, it's not. There is something more, a little bit more to that.
I wasn't informed.
I was just informed myself, so I will share that with you.
All these surprises, you know?
Does anyone have a problem with us speaking to Mr. Tremblay first?
I would actually prefer it wearing two hats as recording secretary. It will make it easier because I also have to recuse myself because I am an abutter to the Tremblies. So, it'll make it easier for me.
Okay, well, there's two win-win. So, with that, we'll go forward with Mr. Tremblay's and then follow the agenda as posted. Okay. Mr. Tremblay?
Would you come forward?
Would you come forward and present your application to the board? Before he presents his application, motion for regional impact?
So, make a motion. Second.
No regional impact. Second.
Okay, and all those in favor that there's no regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
And Joe, we will appoint Joe as the voting alternate because Gail has refused herself.
Kathy, before we have them present, can you at least just read the blurb on what the request is?
Sure.
And that way, everybody understands what it is.
Sure. "Robert Tremblay, owner and applicant, is seeking a variance and a special exception to build a 648-square-foot accessory dwelling unit attached to the existing single-family house on a non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming because it is 1.49 acres in size, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot size of two acres. The variance is needed because Section 528 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance states that the lot on which the accessory dwelling unit is located shall meet the minimum lot size requirement as provided in Section 4.3. The special exception is needed because Section 312, Table A6 of Goffstown zoning ordinance, lists accessory-attached dwelling units as a use permitted by special exception. The property is located on 30 Crestwood Lane, map 5, Lot 82-4, in the agricultural district." And...
Kathy, just one, full disclosure, Mr. Tremblay and I have known each other for a number of years. I don't feel it will affect my decision one way or the other, so I'm not going to recuse myself, but just wanted to put that disclosure into the record.
Well, I'll put into the record that I know Mr. Tremblay also, and I just want to say that I can make a fair judgment and decision on this. And I would also like to say that Mr. Tremblay is well-known in the town of Goffstown, so it is not unusual that there are a couple of us on this board that do know him. So, that being said...
I want to make it a point that I do not know Mr. Tremblay.
Kathy, can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Basically, normally, when a person recuses themselves, they would sit in the audience.
Right.
But because Gail is doing the minutes and her computer's all hooked up right there, I think it's okay to let her stay there as long as everybody else is okay with that.
I agree. I think we've done that before with Gail, so she's pretty good. If she has to say something, I believe she'd get up and go forward to say it. So, with that, well, I'll try and do the right thing at the right time. So, the presenter this evening, is that going to be you, Mr. Tremblay?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Tremblay, would you like to do present the request for the variance?
Well, I'm looking to build an auxiliary building with a 650-square-foot living space above it and a garage under it. And my son wants to buy the house eventually, so we're trying to help him out. He's trying to help me out, you know what I mean? So, the family can live together and everything. I don't, it doesn't impact the neighborhood as far as I'm concerned, you know what I mean? I have a list of neighbors' signatures here that we went around to the neighbors and talked to the neighbors, and they had no problem with, you know, that because it's going to be the same amount of people living there as what's there now. As far as, that's about, you know, I don't know what else to say. It's one of those things that we're just trying to help my son, and he's going to end up helping us out, too, because we're going to live in the apartment. It's, we're not ones that are going to be living in it. He's not renting it or anything because we were seasonal during the summer at a campground. We're coming back there during the winter to have a place to live, and we don't want the expenses, the big expenses of the house anymore. You know, it's a lot of debt.
I want to make one thing. It was brought to my attention today about the possibility that this property was grandfathered. And what I did was I went into the, I requested the zoning ordinance books from that time, 1978. And in front of me, I have them all. But what transpired, and this is how I'm going to present it to the board, in 1978, there were changes to the lot sizes, the minimum lot size requirements of agricultural, residential property, agricultural property, residential, whatever they call it then. And prior to 1978, the minimum amount of lot requirement was one acre. Henceforth, henceforth, the person that was inquiring knew the builder of this property. And it was well-known to not only when built a subdivision, was well-known for building not only a minimum requirement lot, but a lot with a little bit more. So, therefore, we have one and a half acres on Crestwood Drive that the subdivision occurred prior to March of 1978. However, the first residence and home on this particular piece of property, as per our vision statements, was recorded in the registry of deeds in September of 1978. And it very clearly states in the planning book of 1978, this is our town report, mine, it states that as far as the grandfather clause is concerned, the clause would apply only to those lots with residents upon them. It would not apply to vacant lots. So, therefore, this property, I do not feel is grandfathered.
That's not the state law, though.
No, it isn't.
Okay.
The state law just says if a subdivision is subdivided and recorded or approved by the planning board. It doesn't mention anything about houses being built.
That's right. I was just going to say it's the land that we're talking about, not the house.
Because there's lots of records out there now that, for one reason or another, houses were never built on, and they could still be considered a lot of record if they meet certain requirements.
And not only that, I mean, a development like this, how many people would you say off the property believing that it was an acre lot? That's all they needed. All right? And then, now, we're saying that we have this whole development that's non-conforming.
Well, it's non-con...
According, if you say it's not grandfathered, it's not conforming, all the houses that were built.
It's pre-existing, non-conforming. It still is non-conforming, but it's pre-existing.
Right, it's pre-existing, correct.
Do you feel that this property is grandfathered?
So, what you're saying is the subdivision was recorded prior to March of 78?
I'm not sure, but I would assume so.
That's what, that would be the question.
And I would assume so because I don't believe that he would have...
Isn't the property card in here? Excuse me, I can't stop coughing.
And this is an issue I want to have...
Here's what I would suggest. Even if it were or were not grandfathered, we consider it a non-conforming lot today. And today's regulations require special exception to develop the non-conforming, I'm sorry, a special exception regarding building of an accessory dwelling unit. And today's requirements also require that the lot size be met for, if you want to build an accessory dwelling unit on that. So, whether it's grandfathered or not, as long as they are able to show to this board and prove to this board through the application process that we have currently set up, whether, whatever current, whether they're past, you know, back in the day, whether they were grandfathered or not, they should be able to still go through this process and obtain whatever approvals this board has to...
I think it's an interesting question because there are two on here that were from 1978. And I just, the clarity would be good to know, you know, even for future references to, if the, according to our ordinance, as it says, you have to have a residence on it, you know, and they did that in 19, they went through in 1979. But the change of the lot size was effective March, I think, 13th of 1978.
That still renders this, once we change our regulations, that still renders the lot a legal, non-conforming use.
But it could be, I mean...
A legal, non-conforming lot.
I'd like to see that stated when we have another applicant that comes to a development that's a legal, non-conforming lot, you know, that we would know that at the time that these people bought this property, it was conforming. And now, it's not, it's a legal, non-conforming lot. And deep consideration has got to be given to accept this variance, I believe.
Well, but again, if our regulations state that you can get a variance in order to, you know, meet the current regulations...
Right, I agree.
Then, again, whether it's legal, non-conforming or not, I mean, that's up to the board to decide tonight.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you this question, and you can say, "I don't know," and if I don't want to answer, you can say yes, you can say no. Doesn't make a difference to you whether this property, well, you can't answer that right now because you don't know what the vote's going to be? I'm not going to ask it. All right. Why, are you, Joanne, looking?
I can't get it, Java on here, so it won't work.
Let's go forward with this application as presented. All right. So, you have said that you're going for the variance to build the accessory, the variance because you have only 1.49 acres.
Whereas our current ordinance is required two acres. So, you need the variance for the extra half an acre. Yes, we need all the other, the road frontage and all that stuff, setback and all that stuff. You know what I mean? It's just, it's a non-conforming lot, and so that's why you need a variance.
Anybody have any other questions?
Legal, okay.
And you need the, so, we're all set with what you need the variance for?
Yes.
And there, you, are you able to purchase, I think you said here you're unable to purchase any other land to make it conform?
No, no, there isn't because we have power lines between us and Ed Monte is next door to us. So, it's, well, okay, we'll edit that.
Okay.
No.
And you need a special exception because that's required for accessory dwelling unit?
Exception because it's in the agricultural...
That is permitted, it is in the agricultural district, yeah.
You said it's going to be 648 square feet where...
650, right.
Now, is it by 650?
Yeah, we're going to figure out what we're going to do with 648. And the garage is a 28 by 36.
Is it, it's attached, is it attached to that?
It's attached with a 10-foot breezeway in between it.
And you're telling us truthfully that your son didn't pick you out of the house, right?
We keep going back, and he keeps, you know, he's already, he remodeled, he did a little change to the sink in the bathroom and stuff, you know what I mean? That's, we're afraid to go home. No, he hasn't.
Do any other questions?
I have a question, yeah, which is asked of every new addition that's going on about the septic system.
Yes. We, what we're going to do on that is we talked to our dirt man, we'll put it simply, our dirt man, he's, we're going to put a new tank in because they're going to have to tie in from the apartment to our septic tank. And then, we're going to, I understand we have to get a design on file, and we're going to do that. But we're going to do the tank at that time, you know what I mean? Because what it is, my guy said that the tank, the new tanks have got like four inlets. And instead of drilling an old tank, and it's going to be a 1,500 gallon, we're going to a 1,500 gallon where our old tank is a 1,000 gallon. So, we're going to do that while we have the, while he's doing the dirt work for the garage and stuff. We're going to put that in. So, and then, this is my builder, Reggie Houle, and he's got a guy, what's the company's name?
Meridian.
Meridian.
They're going to come out and design a system and put it on file?
Put it on file, of course.
Can I have your name, yes?
First name is Reggie, last name is H-O-U-L-E.
So, we understood that we had to put this...
Okay. Just, all right. I don't have any more questions.
Just clarifying the plan, the addition is going to be, if I'm looking at the front of the house, it's going to be the left of the addition.
Left of the house, and it's going to be straight.
Or the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. And I thought he had pictures there of a garage. There's one that showed the existing, and then there's one that shows where the garage is going to go.
Yeah, the big slides in the back, we have that.
And we have, even with the garage there, we still meet all the requirements for lot plan and, you know, the lines and stuff. But it's going to go straight across from the house. It's not going to be, you know, connected with a breezeway, a 10-foot breezeway.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, any other questions?
Just looking for the garage. Let us, let us key.
I'll just page, I think, it says...
Is it this one? It's the, go to the next one. Oh, the next one. The picture, where was that picture?
Right here. Says through the...
It's the deep black lines.
The house is white, and the driveway comes in, and you see a little breezeway coming off the side of the house right there.
Is there already a garage there?
There's a...
No, there's a shed, and it's been taken away. There's a shed there, we took it out.
The outside portion of the garage?
And that's, the pictures.
Same sideline is where the unit would be. It's smaller than you, than the top.
And this is the garage below.
This is the...
Yes. Which, that's what it says, with a 650-square-foot living space above it.
Is this going to add any impervious surface? Are you going to be utilizing most of the existing driveway?
We're...
We're just going to use the existing.
Existing driveway, that's it. It's, we're going to, you know, build right straight across, and we're going to cut the driveway like 10 feet back, and once the garage is there, we're going to...
Okay, but no additional impervious, then?
No.
Well, it's not going to get connected, it's going to have just a breezeway separate from the chimney.
No, it's existing driveway, everything.
It's not going to be attached, or is it going to be?
Well, it's going to be attached with the breezeway.
With a breezeway, a 10-foot breezeway.
And it's not going flush up because of the chimney?
Yes, it's not going to, we got to come out because of the chimney that's right there.
Okay, we got it. Are there any other questions? No? Okay, you can excuse yourself, and we will see if there's any neighbors.
And we do have this, I don't know if you want to...
Do you want to pass the paperwork?
Can we take that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we were supposed to have that to you before, to me. I'm like, just like...
You don't have to have it at all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for telling us, the whole.
It helps.
Yes.
That would be me.
Say your name and spell your last name for a second.
Different view from here. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Gail Abrek, and I am an abutter across the street from the Tremblies. And I did not sign the paperwork that Mr. Tremblay brought around when he came to us, but I did tell him that if he presented the same thing as he discussed with me, that I would have no problems with recommending that the board approve it. They are, they have always been good neighbors. Their property is kept very, very clean. They're meeting all setbacks. Their prop, the garage and dwelling unit is not going to interfere with anybody else's property. I also spoke with the neighbor across the street who does not live there, Larry Carpenter. And Larry couldn't be here tonight, and he didn't really feel a need. What he told me was as long as it's in the location where it's proposed, he has no problem with it either. So, that's it, not a show.
Does anyone have any further questions of Ms. Abrek? There being none, thank you very much. Is there any other abutter, interested party that would like to speak on behalf of this application? There being none, we will close the public hearing in deliberative.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just want to state who signed this letter that support, in support of...
Sure.
So, this is Michael Laniford, and he's at 22 Crestwood Lane. There's Brenda White at 14 Crestwood Lane, Timothy Bellingham at 14 Ridgewood Drive, and Jessica Labree at 23 Ridgewood Drive.
Thank you, Ryan.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the application.
Second. Okay, we're taking both the variance and special exception together?
Yes.
Okay, there be a motion in a second?
I second it, but I just want to ask a question on the applicant, application. See, the with, they want to build an accessory dwelling unit attached to the existing family home on a non-conforming lot. Where's the garage?
It's underneath the, it's the first level.
Oh, I understand what you said.
The garage will be underneath where the accessory dwelling unit is.
I know, but it's not here.
It's not part of the stated...
Part of the application. I know, but you know what, anybody else would be awfully flustered about it, but I'm just saying that it should have been with, with the garage.
Does the garage fit in the definition of...
The garage isn't part of anything that's needed for the, I mean, it would have helped to describe where it was going to be, but it's not needed, like, you don't need a special exception or anything else for that.
I just want to make sure that this happens, that nothing comes back to bite us.
Right.
So, if they're only building a garage without the accessory dwelling unit...
They wouldn't need it.
They wouldn't need it.
They wouldn't be here in the first place.
But they're in a non-conforming lot.
That's okay. As long as it's already a developed lot, which it is, it's got the house on it, we generally allow for smaller improvements to go on, you know, without having to come back to get a special exception or anything else. So, if it's a vacant lot, we require them to come to develop a non-conforming lot. But if it's an already developed lot, then they don't have to come in.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no. All those abstaining, the motion carries 500. Tremblay, we hope you enjoy your new garage and accessory dwelling unit.
Brian.
Thank you.
Brian, you're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
One more thing.
Yeah, comes the Bel Air Nursing Home, Bel Air Associates. This board is, was informed that this particular application was going to be, was requested to be continued. However, I understand that there are quite a few of the residents that have come tonight to speak on this application. So, I, I think that I'm going to suggest to the board that because those people who, some of them might have been on vacation, whatever, they made the attempt to come here to be heard regarding the application, that we should, it is a continued one, so we can continue with the public hearing tonight, and then we again can listen to what these people have to say since they have journeyed here, and then continue the application for when the applicants can be here. And they certainly can watch the video, or they can read the minutes regarding what some of the residents have come here to say.
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll say it. While I sympathize with the need for the abutters to be heard, I have great misgivings procedurally. I have great misgivings procedurally about continuing the hearing without the applicant here and, um, you know, essentially just taking one side of the testimony without the applicant's opportunity. Hurry about it. I just have a feeling that's legally, that's something that could get us in considerable amount of legal trouble. And I, I'd just rather strenuously object to it, as I say, and not because I'm not sympathetic to hearing the abutters, but I just think procedurally it's very dangerous.
I totally agree. Because the applicant would not be here to hear the comments and our agenda, I'm not sure when this was written, but, um, but I received this in the mail over the weekend and the agenda says that it's going to be continued. So, I think that's legally, even though I feel for them, legally, I think we should not go there.
Just for a clarification, that doesn't say it's going to be continued. It says requested to be continued. So, doesn't mean the board has to continue it either.
Again, I just feel continuing without the applicant present and taking only one side of the testimony is very dangerous.
So, I have two on the board that definitely feel that it should not be, that it should be continued without, um, any public hearing this evening.
Correct.
Without opening it up for public hearing. So, we need to vote on whether we are going to continue it or not continue.
Unless the applicant is here, I, I don't know if they are or not.
Is the applicant here? No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. It's difficult.
Okay. All right, so, we're gonna vote on whether to continue it or not to continue it?
Because we did receive a letter asking that it be continued, right?
Correct, from the applicant. He requested it be continued. I've seen, I've seen, I'll be very honest with you, I've seen both situations happen when I have been to different boards, whether it be the planning board or the zoning board. I have seen either one of the scenarios work out, but it is this board that has to decide for itself what they want to do and it's highly up to this board. So, um, anyone gonna make a?
Make a motion to be continued until September tenth.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know.
I know. Abstained?
I can do that.
Okay. I, I'm abstaining too. So, we have three that say that they want to continue it and two that abstain. Therefore, the, um, application is continued until September tenth.
You can't, you know, you, I'm, I'm for the applicant should be here.
I, you know, this, you are a board, we are a board and we fairly said what we wanted to say. This is where we are. Three of you want it to be continued. We, we are going to continue it till September tenth. So, everybody who came needs to come again.
Do we get notified from this application?
No.
So, we don't have to be notified?
No.
They can just.
That's correct.
So, we get every week?
So, what you need to do is you, every, the zoning board meets on the first Tuesday of every month. So.
Next month, however, it's not.
Next month it's not because of Labor Day. So, it's on the sixth, on the tenth, September tenth. What you need to do is you need to either call the town hall or go online to see if there are any notations, whether or not they are going to ask it to be continued again.
But when I look at the agenda for tonight's meeting, tonight, or today, during the day, it did not show that it was requested to be continued until September tenth.
Yeah, it wasn't listed.
It was not on the agenda as of today.
Are you talking about the agenda that was on the calendar?
On the town website.
Town calendar.
The, the DBA meeting, DBA meeting agenda. Clicked on that link and it did not show that the, had been requested to be continued.
That was our fault for just not updating the, the one on the calendar. Um, when we, we did post it on the, on the, on the wall that way and, um, we sent it out to the board members and I apologize for not getting that up there.
Is there, um, is there a, a point in time where this stops this continuation? Where the board says we're done, we're not gonna keep continuing it?
Generally speaking, um, there, generally speaking, there is an amount, there is an acceptable amount of time that the board looks at continued requests in succession. And, um, when it becomes obvious that it seems to be in a continuance mode, usually a board will deny a continuance.
Because these are all the abutters.
So, all I can say to you tonight is that this will be, they have requested it to be continued till September tenth. The board has accepted that request from the applicant and they shall be here or hopefully will be here September tenth. And if they request another continuance on September tenth, the board will act on that continuance, um, whether to accept or deny it.
And they can submit their comments in writing.
And you can submit your comments in writing.
If, yeah, if you're not able to come to the September tenth meeting for whatever reason, please send a letter in if you have something to say about it and that way it'll get on the record and, you know, it'll, it'll go along with everything, so.
And, and believe you me, it's not a bad idea on the day of or the day before the hearing for any reason, everybody should call the town hall just to see if it is still on the agenda as scheduled. Um, and if they have received one, so, it, that wouldn't be, I would say that to everybody, to anybody in public, you know, just double check before you come in. And I, I, I apologize for the town basically in that you were misled because the information was not corrected on the website and we will address that fact. And hopefully nobody else will attend a meeting thinking that it was going to be heard and not, and not requested to be continued.
I, I don't blame the board for it. I took the day off from work, the night off from work, a week ahead of time for this. So, a couple of days' notice wouldn't have made a difference for me. But I, but I plan to be here as an abutter. If they really wanted this variance to go through, they, if it then went to them, they would be here. That's just my comments. I'll just leave it at that.
Keep us behind me at the library at the intersection.
Well, all right. So, now we know where we are and I did let you speak a little bit and I do understand your frustrations and I thank you all for being here. And I do hope to see you all back here on September tenth. It is an important decision.
Go on, village guy. We're going back to the village, guys.
Okay.
You know, you had to, you had to be fair. This was not fair. Okay.
Well, you know. Can we talk about that? All right, next on the agenda, Stephen and Sandra Monier and Clara P. Monier, applicants' owners, are seeking a variance to allow an additional dwelling unit within the existing detached garage on a six-acre lot with two single-family homes already on it, whereas section three seven two of the Gothstown zoning ordinance only permits one single-family dwelling unit per lot. The property is located on two fifty-one New Boston Road, map four lot fifty-four, in a residential one district. Do I have a motion on regional impact? A motion. Second. All those in favor does not have regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. And this evening, presenting is?
Steve Monier. Give me one second, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Steve Monier. Um, I'm a nearly fifty-year resident of the town of Gothstown. And my wife and I and my stepmother live at two fifty-one and two fifty-three, uh, New Boston Road in Gothstown. It's a six-acre lot that originally my wife and I purchased in nineteen seventy-seven and, and we built two homes on the property in nineteen seventy-eight. A home occupied by myself and my wife and then the home behind us on the same property occupied by my dad, Robert B. Monier and Clara Monier. My dad passed in nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty-six, but Clara still lives in the house behind us on the property. Um, this is a piece of property which is landlocked, but because of kind neighbors, one of whom is here tonight, Bob and Sue Piper, the Pipers were kind enough to grant us a driveway easement for access to, um, Route thirteen, the Boston Road. Originally, when we purchased the property, that, we only had frontage on a class six road. Um, and that class six road has since been discontinued by a vote at town meeting. That occurred in nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four. I, I didn't check the date, but it's in one of those. And that was a petition article that was approved. And so, that class six road was discontinued. Um, we've lived there ever since for thirty-five years. It's been, we were issued two building permits. There was no variance issued for the, for the two homes on the property when we built them. Um, it was already a non-conforming lot, but we got building permits and the town has considered that, um, that use is a non-conforming use with two homes on it ever since. We now have four generations of Moniers living there, including, we raised our children there and now have two of our three grandchildren there. In nine, in two thousand and ten, um, we took down an existing barn that was a detached barn that you could park a vehicle in and it were used for storage. It was unheated and I, that, on that same footprint of where the barn was on the property, we put up a, uh, garage with a home office above it. Now, a couple of things happened and, and I'd like to make reference to give you some perspective and I think you have reprints in your packet of, of the area in question, but this is New Boston Road. If you're heading out Route thirteen towards New Boston, this is the Piscataquag, the south branch of the Piscataquag River. The village is down here about a mile and four tenths from our driveway. And this shows our neighborhood, including the Pipers' residence across the street, Lee Sperry, where he lives, works and operates his business from, and my neighbors on the west of us, Paul and Roxanne Roberts. And this is a blow-up of our property as it exists now, including the garage with the dwelling unit that we're seeking a variance for above it. Um, that's impressive detail that came from Google. A lot of people are worried about the NSA, keeping track of them. I'm worried about Google, frankly. Um, in two thousand and eleven, a couple of things happened. Um, I was asked to go back to work after having retired for the second time. Uh, and I went back to work full-time for someone who I greatly admire and respect. And my son, Chad, and got married. And then later that same year, I had a, had our first, our second grandson. Um, we wanted to help him out as we did our daughter and her fiance, who is the oldest of our children. And we moved them into the space in the garage because it was available so that they could save some money. And in this tough economy, my son was working full-time, going to law school part-time. Um, we were trying to help them out. Um, so, obviously, that became a non-conforming use and hence the reason that we're here today, to seek a variance, to have a dwelling unit in a detached garage. And I guess that's a difficulty in our zoning ordinance. It's because it is detached, um, we do require, uh, a variance. I met a couple of times with Brian in preparing for this evening's hearing and for this application. Uh, he was very helpful. Um, I'd like to make the following arguments as to why I think you should support this request. Um, we called, we've always called this a family compound. That's not a legal technical term. That's just a term that we use because we've had four generations of folks living there. Um, we think it's a great way to promote, uh, the character of the neighborhood, that it's in keeping with it. Um, we're in an R-one zone, which is a medium density. Um, were we to have frontage, which we don't, we only have a driveway easement to Route thirteen, conceivably, uh, with a one-acre requirement, we could put six dwelling units up there. But we don't have frontage. So, it's, it's a lot that, it has a unique characteristics, uh, which is, meets one of the prongs for the tests of whether a variance should be granted. We think this is a low-density use of the six acres. If you look at the larger, uh, view of the entire neighborhood, you'll see that most of my six acres is woodland and green space. It's a wooded lot. Behind me, an abutter who got a notice but, um, have no interest in, in appearing tonight, is the former John King property, which is all timber wood and is now in conservation and is owned by the New Hampshire Protection for the, uh, Society for the Protection of Forests. I have spoken with them. They said, it's fine unless you're doing something that's encroaching over our line, we, we really don't care. Um, but it's, it's a beautiful area. We think if you look at all of the buildings, there are, our neighbors have several outbuildings. Uh, while Lee Sperry across the street from us is in an agricultural zone, he too lives in his garage, his barn, and has his office there and operates his business from there. Um, I have spoken to all of our neighbors, one of whom is here tonight. Bob Piper is here and, and I believe wants to, uh, speak. Um, I talked to, uh, Paul and Roxanne Roberts and I have letters from them and I have letters from Carl Hayfield, who while not a resident, does own a woodlot next to us on the west, uh, both of whom, um, submitted letters saying they are in support of our variance application tonight. They're familiar with the property and they think this is a good use for the property. So, I'll give those to Brian so that they can be entered into the record. Um, in summary, I think I'd like to say generally that, you know, because this is essentially a landlocked piece and because we have two homes on it, I'd like to see this small dwelling unit in a garage be approved. We're trying to help our son out. Uh, we think it's in, in keeping with the vision, uh, expressed in the Gothstown's, uh, master plan of promoting family-friendly neighborhoods, affordable housing, while preserving the character of an area. Uh, I think, uh, we've said throughout our master plan that we want to encourage families to stay together. Uh, in this case, just not necessarily in the same house. Um, again, if this were an attached garage, um, I think we could put an in-law apartment in. Um, this is a family compound that accomplishes all of those. And again, family compound is what we call it. We understand that, that's not a legal technical, uh, definition. There is precedent for this kind of a dwelling unit being approved by this board in a detached garage. You did so in March of this year for folks up on, uh, Back Mountain Road. I think it's in keeping with the, in expressed intent and the vision and values of our master plan. And it meets the criteria, more importantly, the five-pronged criteria, uh, set forth for granting a variance, uh, under the terms of our ordinance and the New Hampshire RSA. So, I would respectfully ask for your favorable consideration of our application. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Septic?
When we first built our septic system, of course, we planned for two houses. Um, the system was built oversized. There are two one-thousand gallon septic tanks on the property. This, if you look at this aerial, essentially this, this whole thing in front of the house my wife and I live in is our leach field. When we built the garage, um, we, the plumber suggested that we put in what he called a state-of-the-art waste churner for waste to go into in the garage, the utility room in the garage, before it goes in, uh, over to the septic tank in front of our house. I have a report, which I'd also like entered into the record, from St. Allen's Septic Tank Service. I asked them to do an inspection in July of this year. He did. They've always serviced our property, um, for well over, um, twenty years, since they've been in business. Um, he says it's in good working order and functioning properly. And I'd like to, I'll present that also to Brian to be entered into the record, along with the letters I have from Carl Hayfield and Paul and Roxanne Roberts. Thank you. So in summary, it's a real nice place.
Yeah.
And we'd like to keep it that way. We're trying to help our kids out, help them get a start in life. My parents did the same for me. I think we all want to do that for children and grandchildren. This is a good use of the property. It fits in well with the area. It's nicely planned. And if you were to visit it, you'd say, "Wow, we ought to be doing more of this."
Yes.
As far as the family compound aspect, single ownership, you own all the property?
Yes. Clara and Sandy and I own the property 100% together. The, I'm actually not on the deed. I have a law enforcement background, and that was by design, because I would get sued a lot, unfortunately. And even though they sue an agency, as an agency head, they always named you personally for some reason. So I'm not on the deed, but we all own it together.
When you were issued the building permits in nineteen seventy-eight to build the two homes, at that time, did you have a, I'm looking here, a septic system that was approved by the state of New Hampshire?
Yes, it was approved by the state of New Hampshire. That's correct. I looked for it in my files to try and, because Brian asked me about that, and I just, I couldn't locate it. So I don't have the original. The gentleman who designed it and built it has been dead well over a decade. He is from Goffstown. It was Mike Reel who did it for us. You remember Mike, of course, up on Mountain Road. Did a great job for us, again, designed it, overbuilt it because of the two homes, and we plan for additions. And in fact, in nineteen ninety-two, we got permits, both Clara and I got permits from the original structures to put a bedroom wing on. Clara put a bedroom wing and an attached one-car garage in the, with the ninety-two building permits. And at that time, that's when we upgraded this, this system by adding a second 1,000-gallon And that was at St. Island's suggestion.
The reason I ask that question, because it does state in the nineteen seventy-four zoning ordinance book, which was not amended until nineteen seventy-nine, that for multifamily dwelling, when served by, or for two-family dwelling, where either public water or public sewer both are provided, or where on a lot, water and a sewer disposal system approved by New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control Commissions are provided. In other words, you could have two homes on that lot if there was an approval by the New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control Commission.
I believe that's where the plans went. That's correct. But, you know, that's from memory. I couldn't, I couldn't find the original.
Well, that was my, that was what my first question was, how could you get two homes on a lot and a building permit without public water or public sewer? Because I know that's more current to our, our current zoning ordinances, either/or for, for two-family. And then when I got these today from the planning, zoning department, I was reading into what was required at that time, and what was required at that time was something from the state, basically, that, that said you met all that regulation, so.
Correct. That's my recommendation, yes.
But then we get into the detached garage. And I think that that's.
When we originally built this, I wanted, I was doing consulting at the time, and I wanted to work, and I'm also, I also write occasionally. I'm a published author. And so my original intent, I did, the reason we wanted to put it back where the footprint of the barn was, is I didn't want an attached garage. You know, we talked about it at the time, but I actually, particularly if I was meeting with a client, I wanted to be able to go someplace out of my home, but on the property. So that was, and the other reason is I put an exercise room there. So that was the original intent for the property.
Was the home office.
Yeah, exactly. So, and, and that didn't require a variance, apparently, because they issued me a building permit. And, but, things changed, and we realized it became a non-conforming use, and that's why we're here tonight.
Which one of these buildings is the garage?
It's this one. If I may. As you come up, and I oriented it this way, because the driveway goes down here to New Boston Road. If you come up, it's, it's, this is the original house where my wife and I live. This is Clara's home.
Yeah.
And then the garage is here, which is where the barn was, again, that we built. It was a permitted, and I don't recall when the barn was built, but it was probably early nineteen eighties.
Quest, have you spoken to the septic aspect of the water supply? You have more than one well on the property?
No, we have a, we have an artesian well. It services all the property. It's very deep, but it's, it services all the property. And originally, we had a dug well. That proved not to be adequate, so we put in an artesian well.
And you wouldn't, we, even with the number of people that are living on the property, you're not, you don't have supply.
Well, you know, there, there's free dwelling units, but there's only five adults on the whole property, so. And, but, to answer your question, no, it supplies, we all have great water pressure and supplies the property. Each dwelling unit has a pressure, its own pressure tank, but there's one well, which I understand for certain developments isn't, isn't unusual, that one well services more than one dwelling unit. In fact, my daughter ended up purchasing a condo, actually a condex, in where, where, again, they, they share the same artesian well.
How much of this that's open land, how much acreage is this open land?
If I could, I'm gonna, Bob McKenzie is a friend of mine, and he also is the former director of city planning in Manchester. He helped me with the site.
Bob, could you say your last name first, please?
Yes, it's M.A.C.K.E.N.Z.I.E.
Okay.
Bob was kind enough to actually do the plot plan. It was submitted as part of the package, with some of the measurements. I'm gonna guess, but, two acres of the six?
Of the six, yeah. I would say it's about one-third of it is developed or grass, and so about two-thirds of it is wooded. And that, that would not change as part of any changes here.
How much of the non-built land is by this particular part, by this particular garage? How much wooded areas around that garage?
Actually, I think you can see part of the property line is right here.
Okay.
And it goes down to their butters, down to about right here, which is the Pipers. So the property line to the west on this other side is closer. So almost all the forested land is to the rear of the property and behind the garage.
We built, the developed part of our property is closest to the westerlymost, westernmost boundary of our property. I should have said that the entire six acres is, and it's described by deed, it's, it's, there are stone walls demarking our property. Actually, at one time in the history, the, that Class six road was the old road to New Boston. It was the eighteen-hundred road to New Boston until the new section was developed, a lot closer to the river. So, and it was all cleared land at one time. In fact, up in, up in this corner of my property, up here, nearest the stone wall, is an old dug well, which I presume they used probably to, for agriculture or for cows, for their livestock. It was all cleared. This, so this is all second growth, actually.
You mentioned that there are some neighbors that have various outbuildings.
Yes.
Could you tell me what kind of outbuildings they have?
Well, the, Paul has, Paul has a horse barn, and he keeps two horses, Paul and Roxanne. And then he has several outbuildings that he uses as sheds, and he stores equipment in and so forth. And of course, across, across the street, Lee Sperry is, he has his business there. He lives in the barn, but he also has his office there, and he has his business there. And he has several structural outbuildings. Again, I presume he, I've never been in them, I presume he uses them for equipment storage. And I'll let Bob speak to any outbuildings he may have. He's here.
Wasn't that used at, the Sperry property, wasn't that used at one time when Dan DeGrenier owned it just for a business? I don't think anybody was.
Originally, when Dan owned it, it was just for his business. Then he put the living unit upstairs above his business. And then now Lee, Lee owns it. He did get a building permit for that, too. When he put, when he put the apartment upstairs, he did come in. I presume he did, sure. He was, and he did that because he owned property, and he built his house up off Page Hill.
Yeah. Okay. On those properties that you referenced, their outbuildings, how many dwelling units do they have?
I don't know. I don't believe any.
Do they just have their one, their one home? Do they have multiple homes on their property?
No, I, I believe there's just one home on each property, of my immediate neighbors.
Did you ever think about subdividing this property for the third dwelling unit?
I can't.
Why?
I have no road frontage. I have just a deed.
You have to get a variance for that, if you wanted to, not having any frontage.
And, no, to answer your question, ma'am chair, no, we do not want to subdivide this. We would like to keep, preserve the character and nature of it, but my understanding is because I have no road frontage, it's one of the reasons that I have to request the variance, is that's one of the unique characteristics of this particular piece of property that allows me to, that meets one of the prongs of the test for a variance.
Yes. Your wooded area, is that part of conservation?
No, it's R-one. There's conservation area behind me, because of the New Hampshire, the, it used to be John King's property, but it's now, Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, I believe. Is that right? Yeah.
I just wanted to just say that I know you referenced the other application regarding the detached garage that we approved as, as part of the reasoning, but if I recollect correctly, there was only one residency on that, that lot that we approved that, that for, which makes it a little bit different than, than this multitude of this family compound.
Do you remember the, do you remember the size of that lot?
Yeah, it was, it was small.
Was it, wasn't it six acres?
No, no.
It was, I looked at the minutes, I don't recall, but it was more than two, I thought, but less than six.
It was a, it was, it had a lot, it wasn't as, as nice as your property, had a lot of problems, that, the, the character and the dimensions of that property.
I only mention that, ma'am chair, because, again, it was a detached garage that I saw in the minutes, and, and, but yes, the, the two homes there, bear in mind, were, have been there for thirty-five years. I mean, and it's a pre-existing use that the town has recognized. And again, you know, we could have built a duplex, we didn't want to do that. You know, we, there's, there's some benefit, keeping families together, I think, is part of what we talk about in our master plan. And, but, but you have to admit, as much as you love your kids and your parents and your children and grandchildren, having them live close by, but not necessarily in the same structure with you, has its advantages, privacy to both. So that was the original design, plan in nineteen seventy-eight, and this is what we're asking for.
So they specifically said on the vision statement here, that, of course, that it was not to be used for a residency, the home office.
Correct.
But then, again, you've now said, "Well, now I want to think about using it for a residency, so I'm coming in for a variance."
Correct.
To vary that statement on the vision plan. Do you envision continuing to develop the property for your ongoing family in the future?
We're done. But in terms of, do we envision it being what it's always been? Yes. It's been a great place, and this has been a great community to, to raise our children, and we very much like it here. We like the way we're close by and nearby, but not necessarily on top of each other, but on the same ground.
The intention, I'm presuming, is for it to remain in family ownership at whatever, let's say you are to fully retire, or the older generation passes, it would go to the next generation of the family?
I mean, I, I can't foresee all things that might happen in the future. I'm, but Clara retired about four or five years ago. She's still there. I've tried to retire twice. I'm still there, but eventually, I hope to do that. Yeah. Do you foresee any future development? No. No, we like the wooded, as Bob talked about, we, we like the way we planned originally for the closest section to our western boundary and keeping as much woodlot as, as possible.
I, yeah, I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward, and, yeah.
I just want to say, I think this is very unique to begin with, the fact that there's two homes there, they've been there for thirty-five years. I, I think if he was coming in with a third home, you know, I'd probably look at it a little differently and say, "Well, could you look into a subdivision, get the variance for the frontage," or whatever. But it's only a six hundred and fifty-one-bedroom, six hundred and fifty-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment. It's not, it's not really going to make any impact on what's already there.
The structure's already there, they're not adding anything, yeah.
It's bigger than six fifty, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's twenty-four by thirty, so it's actually, the outer dimensions, that would make it seven-twenty, but with utility rooms and closet spaces and so forth, the actual living space may be less than that. The dimensions are twenty-four by thirty. So that, I believe, makes it seven-twenty, correct?
But still, you're talking about this little structure on, on six acres.
Correct.
Right, and it, and it's not.
It's a small unit, and to be very honest with you, my son and his wife, when he, he just took the bar exam last week, so he'll, so waiting for results, and frankly, I'm certain they, at some point, want to buy their own, like my daughter did, find a way. And at that point, if I can retire, I'd probably want to move this back to being a home office.
Oh, you're a stand-home office.
For the, for the record, ma'am chair, the building file actually does have a notice of decision that they obtained a variance on June seventh, nineteen seventy-eight, to build on a lot with right-of-way to lot, which does not meet with requirements on property located, so, property located New Boston Road, map four, lot fifty-four.
Lot fifty-four, this is one fifty?
This says, on the application, it says variance to build on ten acres of land off Route thirteen, road frontage on Class six highway, right-of-way into land. But the fact that there's record of a variance being obtained back in nineteen seventy-eight sounds to me like they went through the appropriate process.
But the address isn't what you gave.
It says, it says Stephen R. and Robert B. Monier, Fifteenth East Union, oh wait, oh, but Fifteenth East Union Street.
That's, that's my parents' former. That's, that's my parents' former home in Georgetown.
That's maybe where they lived, but I think it was in reference to map 4 lot 54, which is this lot.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't recall hitting a variance, but I, you know, we both applied for building permits within months of each other. Because my folks lived on, we lived at, their home was at 15 East Union Street. Sandy and I purchased the raw land originally, and then they ended up selling the East Union Street. It was within months of each other. And we talked about, why don't you build on our land? So we went to the town. But we went through the process of getting, of whatever was needed. We went to the town and talked to the building folks. So maybe, maybe Dad did get a variance, I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, I think in terms of this application, I feel like we're just wasting his time right now.
Oh, do you?
I do. I feel like it's.
Tell me how you really feel.
I like him.
Do you like him?
No, I, I feel like, you know, they, they keep a clean plot, they, they're not, they're not growing, even if it's their six acres, they wanted to, you know, develop an acre, I think that that would still be an easy sell for me.
You better stay on this ZBA.
Okay, well, we're, we're asking questions right now, so. Has anybody got any more questions for Mr. Monier?
I would like, well, no. Well, I'll answer him directly, but I would like to go through the criteria.
Yeah.
As he addressed them, for how he, how he addressed.
Before we do that, I want to make sure I've, I've asked everybody up here to come up and, and speak who needs to speak. So before we go through the, are there any more questions that anybody would like to ask of Mr. Monier? There being none, Mr. Monier?
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Other than Mr. McKenzie here, that, they can. Is there any butter here that would like to speak on behalf or against Mr. Monier? Yes, could you please?
Yeah, my name is Bob Piper, I'm a.
Could you please come forward?
You're going to have to come up and sit down.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We enjoy everybody's company.
I haven't seen you in years.
I haven't seen you in years.
I stay on hiding on some of those dwelling units that are on my property when my wife throws me out of the house.
You've got old like me.
Now, by the way, whatever works, I also know Bob Trembling. I went to school with him, I also know Steve Monier, I went to school with him. He was a few grades ahead of me and could be multiple grades in there that I don't know. But I'm a lifelong resident of Goffstown, lived on that property all my life. And any of yous that might know, the old Moore General Hospital, that's where I was born. So, I got a little, my roots are like oak trees. So, given that I've lived there, next to my parents had the property, they gave me five acres, I've lived there all my life. And I have to say, the Moniers have been excellent neighbors, quiet. I, I look at this use that he wants, I see no issue with it. It seems to be well with the property. There used to be a, a, a barn, I guess you would call, supposed to be a barn. It's going to be another piece of, another building there, so I, I just don't see any issue with it. I don't know what the laws state, that's up to you to do. As a former ZBA member a long time ago, I don't envy any of your questions and decisions. Oh, don't be looking that up. The old Henry Grady and Paul Lambert dance, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So I do not have any issue with what Steve is proposing to do with this extra piece of property for, to help his son out. I have three boys that live at home and I have a lot of outbuildings that they keep all their toys in. So, I guess, maybe I might have to live in one of those sometime, I don't know. That's really all I have to say, although now I got a lot of great one-liners, but I will spare you all.
Well, obviously, everybody's glad to see you again, you know, welcome back, so, you know, we're looking for alternates, so.
I've not been on this side of the table, so that was different.
Were you on the ZBA in 1978?
Actually, no.
Tell you.
No. No, don't be looking that up.
I don't know, the 90s.
I don't, hmm.
90s. No.
No. I don't think so.
Mr. Rawwens. Okay, well, thank you very much for taking the time to come here and speak on, in favor of this application, we do appreciate it. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on it for, against this application? Okay, Mr. Monier, did you have anything else you'd like to say to this board?
No, thank you, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. There being none, we will close the hearing and get into deliberation.
I'm going to read the criteria, we have to wait till later.
I'm going to read the criteria. Well, I was, I, I think it is because I, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, as stated in the application, the property in question at 251 New Boston Road is in an R1 medium-density residential district, which is established to accommodate existing and future residential development at medium densities. The requested variance is in keeping with this. This is a six-acre lot, which currently has two dwelling units on it and always has been considered a family compound. It is an appropriate use for the neighborhood in keeping with the Goffstown master plan and overall vision for neighborhood and residential development. Any comment? Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the R1 zone is designed for medium-density residential. R1 allows for one dwelling unit per acre lot. The variance request would create three dwelling units on six acres, preserves the character and nature of the property, and fits in well with the neighborhood. See overhead slides of neighborhood and property in question, we really look at those. Any statement about that? Granted, the variance would do substantial justice because it is in keeping with the spirit and intent of the Goffstown master plan for medium-density residential development, affordable housing, and appropriate use of existing properties. This property is already a grandfathered family compound, which promotes an excellent use of a six-acre lot with no street frontage, deeded right-of-way only to New Boston Road, and furthers the use of the property in that capacity. All residents are Monier family members. The value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because it's an appropriate use of the intent of the R1 zone, that is, medium density. This section of New Boston Road has similarly situated residential dwelling units with various outbuildings and is across from a barn slash garage, which houses both a residential dwelling unit and a local business, which is in an agricultural zone. All of the residential butters and lease fairy from On Point Concrete are supportive of this application. Will not result in necessary hardship owing to, oh, demonstrate that literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in this area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because this lot has no road frontage. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it is in keeping with the spirit and intent of the R1 zone, the existing nature of the property, i.e. a family compound, and fits within Goffstown's vision for residential development as expressed in the master plan.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
I think Joanne's question before kind of highlighted it, goes to the heart. It is, I think it is a reasonable use. If we're talking 2,000 square foot home, we'd have a whole different kettle of fish. But the fact that you're looking at an accessory dwelling unit, a six-acre lot, it strikes me that it is a reasonable use within that text.
Can I ask a question?
Well, yeah, and I, I want to comment on that statement.
Oh, go ahead.
My comment on that statement is he is looking for an additional dwelling unit, he is not looking for an additional accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, this would be a single-family home, as we consider it as a single-family home, because it's a detached home and it's larger than the, the accessory dwelling unit limits that we have, 650 square feet. In addition to that, I mean, additions could be made in the future to make it larger, if it being considered a single-family home, if they wanted to.
Unless there are conditions that, that I mentioned that are restrictive, so. If the criteria is fair, if it had not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in a strict performance with the ordinance and a variance as therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. The explanation is, although it is a six-acre lot, there is no road frontage on New Boston Road. The owner has only a deeded right-of-way for driveway access to the property, which is bound on all sides by a stone wall. The northernmost boundary line of the property line runs along a now discontinued Class 6 road, which was the old road to New Boston before the current section of Route 13 of Boston Road was established. Other issues of matters applicant deems relevant to this request were not mentioned. So those are the, how the applicant addressed the criteria for us to consider to issue a variance.
However.
Yes.
If they wanted to expand this structure in the future, I believe that they would have to come back to this board because it's on a non-conforming lot, no?
For the, for the reason that I said earlier, if it's already the developed lot and they're expanding something on it, as long as they're not creating new dwelling unit or something that would, in our, in our ordinance, requires you to come to do that, then we treat that as an already developed lot and you're not developing it.
How does it was a new structure going on?
Well, even, even then, I'm not citing that, that paragraph in the ordinance, section, yeah, section 14. What that states is, 14.7.3, except as maybe, it says, use of a non-conforming lot. Except as may otherwise be allowed in accordance with Section 14.5 grandfather clause of this section, a non-conforming lot may, as a special exception pursuant to Section 15.3.2 special exceptions, be developed for any use permitted within the district in which it's located, subject to the following conditions. And then it conditions a few items that you have to meet in order to do that. But in this case, it, they being already developed lots, I don't consider making small additions or even large additions, developing a non-conforming lot because it's an already developed lot, if you will.
Well, I can somewhat agree with what you're saying, but I also can agree that we can put conditions on this application so that, that, that will just, it would capture what I think the Moniers are trying to establish. It will prevent any future confusion as to additional development occurring on this non-conforming lot. And it would then require an additional variance for the applicant to come in if there was an expansion to that which exists right now. And I think that might help the board when they're looking at this whole plan as to what they think or how they think they want to look at it. I, I know that I have concern when I see the six acres of, of property, I'm considering opening it up to three dwelling units. It, it could justifiably in the future, one, open it up to a fourth develop, the, the, the possibilities are there, whether the, the intent is there by the applicant or not, but the possibilities are there, that a fourth dwelling unit could be asked to go on there. And they would use the same rationale that they've used here tonight, is, you know, it's all in accordance with the family compound. So, I think we, we have, we finally, after all these years since 1978, and this whole complex has developed over the years in this town. And I was somewhat amazed, to be perfectly honest, that it is in front of us at this point, but I can understand why because now we're into the, 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 the home office being, coming now, a residential dwelling unit. And that was not part of the agreement of, of the building permit for the home office.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like you, you want to put some conditions that says that they can't expand.
Yes.
Without coming back?
Yes.
But, expanding on current structures would be allowed by the current ordinance? But if they wanted to add a fourth structure, they'd have to come back?
I, I have, I, I honestly speaking, I would love to see this have been, come in under a variance for a detached accessory dwelling unit, even though it exceeds the 650 or possibly is within that. I would have, I, I think I would have liked to have seen that and had the two dwelling units that were permitted and then have a detached accessory dwelling unit, which we have done before. But that not being the case, I, I, from my vote, I would like to see that the garage dwelling unit stays the size that it is now.
I just.
The other two single dwelling units are, are, are permitted. They were permitted by a building permit, they had the water and the sewer. So to allow this to be a third dwelling unit, I would, I would like that not to be increased in size without coming for, for an additional variance, because it is a non-conforming lot and it would continue to expand into the non-conforming.
I, I just, I just worry about going out of our way to make things difficult in the future when we don't have to right now. Un, unless, I, I mean, if the ordinance was changed, you know, if, if you proposed, I guess, an amendment to the ordinance that would require expanding on current structures, to, to request an exception, I think that's one route. But since there's nothing right now that says that they need to come back, I feel like it's just giving them more hassle in the future, just because of a, a concern.
Would a simple square footage limitation address the concerns? Say, I believe Mr. Monier said it was 24 by 30, would it be 720? So even if you had a limit of, say, 750 square feet arbitrarily, that would have. That's, I guess, I guess my question, I'm going to address one to Brian, too, and he say, you know, we generally allow expansions. I mean, at what point, say, if someone were to come in and say, I've got this structure and it goes from a detached garage with an apartment and wanting to convert that into a single-family home, that would seem to me it would go beyond the question of a simple expansion of existing.
Well, again, I mean, this is a detached sing, garage already with, whatever you want to call it above it, it's a, it's a dwelling unit above it. I call that generally, when you have a garage and, and some living space, a single-family home. So, that, my understanding of the way we would allow it is you could expand on that because there's no limit to the size of a, well, there is some limit to square footage, I think, but. No, for, for single-family homes, maximum non-agricultural, non-residential building footprint is 5,000 feet. So, I mean, that would be.
So, so that's, we, we have that already in the ordinance, so anything Glenn said, it, it would, it would be arbitrary. You're just picking a number that says, well, I'd feel comfortable.
Oh, I think, I think.
If they, if they expand below this number.
Do we charge impact fees for accessory units?
Yes.
We do. Is it a lesser number than it would be for a single family unit?
Yes.
Len, could you clarify what you said?
My thinking on that was simply to say that, you know, granting the variance with the condition that the structure be limited to the seven hundred and fifty square feet and that, you know, future expansions would require returning to the board.
I was under the impression that this, and maybe I read it too fast, but I was under the impression that this request was for an accessory apartment larger than what is allowed. Am I mistaken?
Here's the notice language.
The notice language does.
Says to, to allow an additional dwelling unit. It doesn't specify single family or accessory dwelling unit.
Is the intent for a accessory unit? Yes or no?
You, I don't know if the hearing's closed.
The hearing's closed.
I just need to know the intent, if it's for an accessory unit or a single family.
I didn't think it was an accessory unit. I thought it was.
I thought it was for an accessory unit that was going to be the size that it is now.
To be able to be an accessory dwelling unit, though, you have to meet several certain other criteria.
And that's what I thought the variance was for.
Well, the variance is only listed to allow another dwelling unit on it. If they were to get this as an accessory dwelling unit, they'd also have to meet section five point two, which limits their square footage to six hundred and fifty square feet in five point two point one.
And I thought they were asking.
It's supposed to be attached to a single family residence, so they'd need a variance on that one.
But I thought it was one variance.
Interior connecting door, which they'd have to have a variance on that one.
But I thought it was one variance package for allowing for an accessory detached accessory unit and the variance would be for all of those items listed under the accessory requirements.
Well, I guess it depends on how you would list it, I guess, but many times, most people will meet a lot of those that need a variance from one of them.
Because I think that's important and if we could hear, maybe reopen and hear from the applicant.
All right, I am going to reopen the, the public hearing for the applicant to address the question that is being asked by one of the board members. If you'd like a moment to talk to.
May I?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Originally, that's what I thought I could get, but I, when I came in and met with Brian, he said, no, you need to go the route of, it's a dwelling unit because of it exceeded the six fifty. I mean, I, twenty-four by thirty is.
Reasons that they don't meet those criteria.
Right.
I considered it something different than an accessory dwelling unit.
I thought the variance was for the criteria as listed under section five because it's detached, it's larger, so it doesn't meet the criteria. If it's an accessory, then it's restricted to the size.
Correct.
That you've applied for.
But I got.
Impact fee would be less money. I'm not sure what the difference is.
Well, I liked that part.
But if you'd rather go the other way, then it sounds like there might be a restriction to the size as well.
And, and as to that, you know, I, I wouldn't quibble with a condition that says I'd have to, if we ever want to expand that structure, that I'd have to come back to Z U B A. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Originally, I did want to, but that, that's up to you because I understand your position.
I'm not even boding on this, but I just worry about, I just worry about, about putting a condition in there just because the current board feels like they should when it's not required.
Right, because it's, it's already allowed in the ordinance.
Right, I, I mean, I have no, I, I have no reason to believe that you have intentions to expand on the property, but I'm just, on the, on the principle of the fact that, you know, you're adding a condition unnecessarily.
And that could be considered an unreasonable condition and we're only allowed to add reasonable conditions.
I want Mr. Monier.
But just to get back to your original question about the intent, when I first read it, I read all this stuff and was starting to prepare for it. Not, not being a land use guy, you know, my expertise is a different area of the law. I thought because it was a detached that I could try and, in fact, I thought I could go just for a special exception first because it was a detached and I'm considering it, it's an apartment in the garage. So I thought I could go for an accessory use. But, but when I'm, because of the square footage and I didn't argue, you know, when I met with Brian and he's probably given me good advice, so that, that's why I wrote it up the way I did.
Well, I think if the issue of the square footage is, an expansion is a question that we have two ways to approach it. And I think the board will get to the order as to how they want to get to that footage issue.
Okay, the other.
Thank you. Are you, do you have any questions?
I'd just like to also bring up that, then in the notice language, it talks about what section they're asking for a variance from. And if we switch that, then I would suggest it have to come back to another hearing because it's, it's not the same section and so notice is totally different. Even though the end result may be the same or similar.
Another hearing because of the wording or another hearing?
Because it's a different, different area of the ordinance.
And if the main concern is just limiting the square footage, I don't know that it necessarily is an unreasonable condition just because the fact that they are here tonight means that it wasn't allowed originally in our ordinance. They have to come for a variance for something, which means the town, I think the town has reasonable ability to impose a condition that says, okay, well, if we're going to allow this, then we, we want you to limit the size.
Well, okay, and that.
They're saying limit the size.
I understand, but do we need Mr. Monier? I brought him, I brought him here to, out of public, and I'd like to. So is the public hearing go back into deliberations?
Can I just ask a question before you leave? It's not really a question, but in case he needs to answer something. It says in the agenda that it's a variance to allow an additional dwelling. It doesn't say.
An accessory.
Well, it doesn't say accessory, I realize that now, but it, it also doesn't say anything about size. Except the size of it, except in the application it does.
Right, but let me tell, let me say something about the size. The, the structure's already there. The size is already there. Ladies, we are deliberating and I would like to make a perfectly clear point that I have the public, I have the meeting on the public hearing. And I would like to, once again, close the public hearing so we can all deliberate correctly. So, Mr. Monier, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I repeat what I said?
Yes, please do, thank you.
The size is already there. What's it supposed to do? Shrink it?
No, 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 no.
The size of the garage and the area is already there. How can you say that you only can have six hundred square feet or whatever and not seven hundred and twenty?
Well, you know, there's a lot of ways around that and you can, there are, there are, there are different, there are many different paths to get to that issue. I think that Len over here was saying if it's seven hundred and fifty square feet now, we limit it to the existing size that it is. So we, we are, we are, and I'm just suggesting this on the table. We are now coming forward and we're saying, okay, fine, you know, we've, we've tussled between this accessory and dwelling unit. We're able to take this application and not have to repost it and re-notarize everything to the butters and say, okay, fine, we can get the same semblance of what we want to get done here by saying, okay, we'll give you this additional dwelling unit. However, we're going to restrict to the size that it is now, which is pretty close to an accessory dwelling unit size. And then if you decide to make it bigger, you're going to have to come back in here and you're going to have to, you're going to have to come before a board again to look for another variance.
But.
And, and I'm just putting that out there for.
In order for him to make it bigger, you're going to make the garage bigger, or you're going to.
I'm just thinking out loud here.
Yeah.
Because I haven't really thought this through, but it seems like, what would he be really, if he had to come back, say he wanted to make it bigger at some point and he had to come back, what would the variance be for? Because as Brian said, if someone has a structure on a non-conforming lot and it's an existing structure, that they don't need a variance to expand it. So how can we say to him, you need to come back here for a variance?
But if the conditions of the variance granted specify.
But why do you want to add a condition when it's not necessary?
It would maybe be a difficult thing to monitor unless someone double-checked that file and noticed the, the notice of decision in the file saying can't do any expansions. You know, if somebody just was looking at the building permit and, you know, didn't actually pull out the file and research the entire thing to figure out, oh, you know.
Yeah, creates another layer.
Down the line, it creates a layer of, you would have to, you know.
In a lot of ways, that's why we're here now, to be honest with you. Because we have layer upon layer upon layer upon layer on this particular piece of property. And to put more layers upon this piece of property can go ad nauseam, can go ad infinitum because that's what has happened here. And this has been going on since nineteen seventy-eight. Now.
But with recognition by the town.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I've been sitting here, I've got so much to say, but you guys.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's okay. The, the question that I wanted to ask Brian especially, I remember reading something about saying that one of the, one of the homes that is built is grandfathered and the other one was built by Wright? Is that the, did I, did I remember that?
I think I may have made that statement in my report to you guys, not knowing about the variances or whatever that may have been granted. Norm, well, normally in our ordinance, we would have, you know, basically there, there are two houses on the property. One obviously is allowed by Wright, you know, anybody can build a house on their, on their single family home. The second one would be grandfathered. I don't know which one is which and I don't know. I mean, they're, they were both built at the same time and so, you know, you could technically say that both are grandfathered or, you know, one is grandfathered.
Is this a unique property in town, Brian? Are there, are there any other lots in this situation that you're aware of?
I believe there are. I don't know any specific off my, off the top of my head, but I, I would venture to guess that there are others like this.
When you mentioned the word, okay.
I would, I would just say, and I'm prepared to make a motion, I just, I just think in what we're, what we're saying in this discussion, Mr. Monier has been absolutely honest all the way along. I think if we set a condition that said, and he said he didn't object to limiting the size, that if there were any serious consideration of turning it into a full single family home, I'm sure he would come back to the town because that's, he's done everything above board as it is. So can I offer, can I offer a motion?
Not yet.
You want to continue to discuss?
I'll let Len make the motion. I'll grant you the motion, but.
You, you guys jumped further ahead than I ever was after Kathy read about the criteria for the variance. And one is, one of the biggest things, or there's actually a couple of things in here that he uses as reasons to support his, his argument for granting the variance. But I see it just the opposite because he says it's a six acre lot with no street frontage and it's a deeded right of way only. So he's adding another dwelling unit to something that is only a deeded right of way. And another dwelling unit means more people and we still have to get fire and police up there and things like that. And you're adding more people, which means greater risk. I, I, you know, granted, everybody who's going to be safe and things like, wants to be safe and things like that. But when you have more people living on a property, there's more risk and it's only a deeded right of way. And to put a third dwelling unit, I have great concern.
Can I just say something to you, Gail?
Here.
When she read this, she asked us all if we had any comments. Will you say any?
Well, I thought we were just going through them and then going to comment afterwards.
Is there any comment?
Well, I can still say my comments now, though.
You can, but it's a little late.
They're still there.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yeah. Are you, are you, excuse me, are you commenting on what Gail just said?
I am.
Okay.
We do have comments from the fire department and it basically says, I'll read it word for word. Applicant must be made aware, reminded that the new dwelling unit must meet current building life safety and fire code prior to occupancy. So the fire department looked at it.
I have a comment to, what Gail brought up to, I mean, a deeded right of way just means that, that another property owner gave them right of way across their property. I mean, from the looks of it, it looks like a driveway. It's just a different, it's just under a different approval or documentation. So I, I wouldn't look at it as any different than a regular driveway that the fire trucks have to get down.
Has anybody on the board been up to see this piece of property?
Yeah, I have.
Years ago.
Years ago.
Yes.
I know how long ago you've been up there.
Bob was telling.
You're welcome back anyway.
Okay, that's it. I need one more question. Do you have any, do you have anything else, Gail?
Well, I'm, I'm just not convinced that it meets all the criteria of the zoning, of the variance requirements.
And well stated. Okay, is there, ladies, or would you, we'd like to entertain the motion by Len? Okay, Len, let's say what you're going to put on the table for us.
I'm only going to make a motion that the variance be approved with the condition that the dwelling unit was limited to the existing square footage and footprint of the home office slash garage building as in now. That would be the only condition.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to add to that in that there will be no more dwelling units built in addition to the three.
Do you want to, do you want to?
That exist presently.
Do you want to add the fire department's comment about meeting building code or fire code requirements?
I think that's almost inherent. Any structure has got to meet the current code requirements.
I don't think you can put a restriction on there that no further dwelling units be built.
It's there.
By someone's rights to.
It's their property.
Ask for another variance.
Another variance.
Okay. Then you'd have to come in for another variance for another dwelling unit. That works for me. Here we have a motion on the table to accept the application with the condition that the dwelling unit above the garage
Be limited.
Be limited to the existing square footage. The garage and the dwelling unit be, be limited to the existing square footage.
Of the structure.
Of this, of that particular structure. Because we're talking about that structure.
Right, that's it.
So we need to focus on that structure.
Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Sure. Len made the motion to.
The existing structure.
Made a motion to approve the variance with the condition the dwelling unit be limited to the existing square footage of the existing home office and garage as it is now.
With your approval? Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Against.
Yep, the motion carries four, one, zero. Welcome back. Good to see you again. And I saw your mother in Sully's the other day and I heard she was very much going to stay a part of Goff's town, which is very nice to hear.
That's the plan.
Don't forget your board next year. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
No, let's keep on moving. Okay. We're on a roll now, can't you tell? Okay, thank you, everybody. The next one is First Sign and Corporate Image Inc., applicant and YMCA of Greater Manchester, Goffstown Hallard Center owner, are seeking variance to replace the two existing grandfathered signs on the lot with two newly internally illuminated signs on the lot. The variance isn't needed because they are proposing two signs. One is 22.8 square feet in size, and the other is 34.2 square feet in size, whereas Section 651 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance permits no more than one freestanding sign, no more than 12 square feet in size. The grandfathered rights are extinguished with the removal of the existing signs. Another variance is needed because the proposed signs are internally illuminated, whereas Section 65 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance only permits illumination by a shielded external white light. The property is located at 116 Goffstown Back Road, map six, lot 18, in the agricultural district. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion.
No regional impact?
No regional impact?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four... No one has stated, yes? Four, zero, zero? Yeah, four, zero, zero, you take about four, zero, zero?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Would the applicants please come forward, state their names, and spell their last name, or the first names for us?
I'm Scott Auberton from First Sign.
You are?
Scott Auberton.
Could you just spell it?
A-U-B-E-R-T-I-N.
I'm Adrianne Fitzpatrick, A-D-R-I-E-N-N-E-F-I-T-Z-P-A-T-R-A-C-K, from the YMCA.
And you're from, excuse me?
YMCA.
YMCA.
I'm Michelle Shepherd, S-H-E-P-P-A-R-D, Michelle with one L, and I'm the branch director for the YMCA Albert Center.
Welcome. So, you're here on signs.
And since it's Old Home Day, it's nice to be back in Goffstown. I was resident for 25 years, and some of our children went to school together, so. Anyway, we're here requesting this variance after carefully going through the property and trying to come up with a solution for a number of problems that the property has. The YMCA was fortunate enough to get this facility when, I believe it was Indian Ridge Health Club vacated it, and the Allards helped them to acquire it. It's a really wonderful facility, and I think it's a wonderful thing that Goffstown has its own YMCA. Unfortunately, it is a commercial use in a residential area, so that's problem number one. Problem number two is the fact that it's perched at the top of that hill, and we've got some pretty significant traffic issues getting people in and out of there safely. What I feel like we're proposing is appropriate for the location. We've given it a lot of thought. The size of the sign, the main sign is equal to what is grandfathered there now. It's about 32 square feet, we're asking for 34 square feet there. And the parking sign at the second entrance is actually quite a bit smaller than the one that was previously there, which was 32 square feet. It was bowled over, I guess, recently by a plow. So I think that the biggest bone of contention is going to be the internal illumination, and I just want to say right up front that the reason we went with that was primarily a safety issue. Also, we're using LED illumination in these signs now. And the only part of the sign that's illuminated is the actual YMCA logo and the message board center. The LED lighting is quite a bit more even and not as bright as the fluorescent lighting previously used in internally illuminated signs. And with the style of this sign, we thought it was inappropriate to be hanging lights off it, and we thought it would be less light pollution if we, in fact, just had it internally illuminated where we had to have it illuminated. The illumination giving people the visibility coming both directions on the street earlier, knowing that there's a facility there to watch for traffic and knowing where to turn to get into the parking. So I'll just go through the five points, if I may. In the granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because the goal of the proposed sign package is to create a well-marked, immediately recognizable subject property with appropriate directional wave-finding signage to minimize confusion and promote safety. The spirit of the ordinance is absurd because the variance process allows for making exceptions where unique conditions require alternative approaches. The addition of these signs does not contrary to typical allowable signage for commercial properties other places in Goffstown. Granted, the variance would do substantial justice because the proposed sign package is representative of signs as provisioned for a commercial-use property in Goffstown. Allowing the YMCA Allard Center the same signage allowed for a commercial property will ensure their continued prosperity in the community. The values of the surrounding property will not be diminished because the improved signs are intended to enhance the look of the property and follow the nationally implemented standardized sign design guidelines for the YMCA. The presence of the YMCA in a neighborhood would be attractive to families. And that is my presentation.
The hardship criteria?
What's that?
The hardship criteria?
Okay. Only the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because the property is a commercial use in a residential and agricultural area and has a high traffic flow. And it is a reasonable one because the property is situated in the crest of a road with two entrances and short visibility, creating a potentially hazardous situation. So I'll entertain any questions in crossfire.
It looks like it's just going to be white light?
Yes, it is.
No scrolling, red LEDs or anything?
No.
When I look at this, I have a picture here. When I look at this and I look to the Manchester side of it, how far does your property go down the hill?
I believe the property line is just beyond that parking area. There's actually, I believe, an old stone wall between the residences right there and the YMCA property. So the sign is actually probably 250 feet from the property line on that side. I don't have that measurement exactly.
On the other side, how far does the property line go towards the Goffstown side?
On the Goffstown side, I'll check if I've got this the right orientation here. It goes down to, once again, the residence that's on the Goffstown side there, probably 15 or 20 feet off their first building there. There's a wooded area between where the entrance to the parking is, which is indicated by a 92 on the overhead Google map there. And there's a wooded area, and then the residence, you can see it just off the side of the map there.
Now, you are zoned, what are you zoned?
It's agricultural, I believe.
Agricultural?
R1 agricultural or something to that effect.
Agricultural.
Yeah. And I really don't know the history of the property, how they were permitted originally to do the... I knew somebody would.
In the beginning, what's the word? In the beginning, the proposed use was for a assisted-living apartment, condo, with the one full building, with like a garden center in the middle, with little stores underneath, plus apartment house apartments for the elderly. That failed, so I guess Mr. Allard either donated the property or leased the property to, I didn't get that fact, to the YMCA. At that point, it was an agricultural residential use, which was stated that it would be turned into a commercial piece of property after this was built. It was not ever turned into a commercial piece of property. That's about 20 years ago, at least 20 years. So my question to you is, why is it that nobody went, or it hadn't been put as an article, to transfer the agricultural use and put into a commercial use? Why wasn't it put into a commercial piece of property before even entertaining the fact that a sign is not permitted on either one of these pieces of property? Do you know anything about that?
Well, the only thing I know is that I think after that first use made, if that first use was put into place and it failed, it was then permitted as the health center. The Indian Ridge Health Center, it was like a health club.
Correct.
It wasn't for retirees or anything, it was just a health club. And I think when that failed is when the Allards made it available to the YMCA.
No, it was for apartment, I remember the plan and everything, it was for apartments. And it was for, they were supposed to have a beauty salon and, I guess, little stores underneath.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a tennis club for a while?
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Before that.
I recall.
Yeah.
Lower that, and it was going to be like a little center where the people could have their lunch and eat breakfast or whatever. It would be a little area, and for some reason, it never materialized. I guess the developer decided that this was too costly or wouldn't be able to. But it was a good zone for it, because it was agriculture residential zone. And then after that was the...
For clarification purposes, signs are allowed in the agricultural zone for businesses, but they're limited in square footage to, I think it was 12 square feet that we put in the notice. So they are allowed, but both signs are larger, both existing signs are larger than that. And so if removed, they would either need to meet the square footage requirement or get this variance that they're asking for to be able to enlarge, to do a larger sign.
Well, that was one of my questions. What is the square footage of these?
32 square feet each.
Each, 32 each. So when you say removed, you don't take into consideration what was there and just say, okay, they could replace it with something more modern at the same square footage?
No.
They have to start all over? Oh, that's weird, okay.
What about the orientation of the signs? As I remember, sign B on your drawing here, that was a sign that was placed parallel to the right-of-way.
I don't know who did that, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense. The smaller sign they were proposing will be...
Are you talking about perpendicular to the new sign?
Yes. The second sign, which is the smaller, well, you have a better copy of it than I do, I'm sure. The smaller sign, that's actually going to be perpendicular to the road. And the internal illumination, actually, this one is not even internally illuminated, I don't believe.
It's the lower portion of the sign that will be illuminated?
This one is not at all.
This one's not internally illuminated, I'm not sure if that's... Mr. Haley from my office gave that information to you, Mr. Rose, but this one's not even internally illuminated, it's only the main sign that's internally illuminated.
Okay, now, we have two signs here.
Yeah.
That you're requesting a variance for.
Correct.
And are you saying one of them is internally illuminated and one of them is not?
That's correct, the main sign at the main entrance.
And main sign is A or B?
A.
Okay. So A will be internally illuminated.
Correct.
So if you look at this sign, this portion doesn't have any internal illumination?
That's correct, just the logo itself, yeah.
Except the logo, that will shine through.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming this is set up this way as a message board?
It is, yeah.
Is there some reason why you have to go with such a bright white? Those lights are, those signs, white signs at night, in my opinion, look awful.
Well, we actually, it wouldn't necessarily be that bright. That was my artist's attempt to make a daytime photograph look like a nighttime photograph. But what we're doing is using LEDs, and it's a perimeter LED illumination, and we used it successfully in Portsmouth, where we actually had the same exact situation in Portsmouth. And it is an agricultural zone there, internal illumination wasn't allowed, and the size exceeded what was allowed there.
Do you have a photograph?
I don't have one, I apologize. I meant to get one, but I wasn't able to. But it is definitely not that brilliant white light that you get from the fluorescent light fixtures that, you know, they have on gas stations and things like that.
Are you planning on turning this off at night?
Absolutely. It will be on a timer and a photo cell.
What are the times that you're thinking of?
I think we had talked about 10 o'clock at night it goes off.
Our building hours until 10:00, we have people in the building until 10:30.
Okay, so 10:30 or 11:00, yeah, and it would go off.
And that would be for the school year, and then we have our hours till 9:00, so it would be 9:30 during the summer.
In the morning hours?
In the morning, we begin operations at 5:30, so it'd probably be coming on at 5:15.
5:15?
5:30 a.m.
A.m.?
Probably 5:15 would be the time we would time it for.
In the back of this property here, could you tell me what's behind here, what's in here, and what it looks like?
Should we look reference to what portion you're on?
You have an aerial there that gives you a bit of an idea. Maybe not.
I believe it's just undeveloped woods back there.
In my report, I think it shows a better idea of what's back there. There's a pool, an outdoor pool back there, and...
A camp.
I could be aerial view, but I don't see the back of the property.
I thought that, I didn't own that property. That property about Medford Farms, doesn't it?
It does, I think.
And there was drainage issues back there.
There is. They've been rectified.
Stefan, back?
Village of Lynn Falls, Village of Lynn Falls, I was just there. They have been rectified, when?
We had, it was done in May and June.
When was this rectified?
May and June, 2013.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Good comments, but I'll...
Okay. Any other questions dealing with the applicant?
Just one question, did we plan on ever changing this zoning to commercial?
Do you want to, and you want to suggest that to the planning board? I mean, that's something that anyone could suggest to the planning board.
Wouldn't that be spot zoning?
I don't know that it would. It could be considered a spot zone, and it also wouldn't necessarily impact, well, it wouldn't necessarily change the fact that they needed a variance still, because we still have in the commercial zone a rule that you can't be within 250 feet of a residential or agricultural zone for an internally illuminated sign, so.
Okay. I think it's something to consider, but I don't know.
Right.
I think it could be something to consider, but discussing.
So just one... It would allow them the larger signs that it would grant them.
Right. Okay.
The illumination, though.
Just one clarification, I think I already said, the sign B will just be the upright portion?
That's correct, there's no message on that.
Thanks.
And the logo won't be illuminated?
Nope.
How much taller?
Excuse me, but I think what we'll do is probably illuminate it from the ground or from above, just so it does have light on it. But no, it won't be internally illuminated.
No digital?
No digital, no neon.
How much taller are these signs than the old ones?
I think that the main sign ends up being almost the exact same size as the existing one there. It might be a little, about eight inches taller. It's going from memory, because it's been a while since I've looked at this. And then, as you can see on this other one, that was a four-by-eight sign, and now we're going to a three-foot-wide sign that's only 90 inches tall, so it's quite a bit smaller. But we didn't feel we needed a huge sign there for that.
Do you know the existing height of those signs, though?
Well, you can kind of assume that if this is four feet there, we've got another three feet there and almost a foot on top, so it's almost eight feet tall.
Are these lit now?
This one is lit from overhead.
The top one.
The top sign, sign A, which is the existing sign.
That's that space up above, and they have just a fluorescent light that hangs up above.
You had made a comment in your presentation that the reason you wanted the internal illumination was for a safety issue. Could you please tell me what that safety issue is?
Well, sure, just for even illumination of the sign, as opposed to trying to fix light fixtures on this thing. In the event that you have a sign like this, it's pretty easy to put a light fixture over it and illuminate it. But even this sign here, the light only illuminates that sign about halfway down.
What does that have to do with the safety issue?
People at night being able to see it in time to make the turn, awareness of it, yeah.
I have a question of signs and sightlines. Looking at the Google aerial that you provided here, it looks like you've had some butters straight across the road. What's the distance from the sign to the nearest a butter?
Well, it's the width of the road plus the setback. By law, there's a setback that we have to do, which is, I don't know, there's 20 feet there, I'm not really sure if you know that, Mr. Rose, but that's what that would be. And the butters on the other side of the street would be looking at the end of the sign, where there wouldn't be any illumination.
Okay, so both signs are going to be allowed at perpendicular to the roadway, then?
That's correct.
Are you trying to say that the way that the sign is facing, because they're looking at the side of the sign, that they're not going to see the lights, that's going to...
Well, no.
The illuminated lights?
Looking directly at it, you wouldn't see it, but from any angle, you're going to see some light there. The same way you would if it was lit with an overhead light. The difference is...
You made it sound like they weren't going to see that.
Well, I, no, I didn't mean to say that they weren't going to see it at all, but the way it's oriented, they're not going to have any more light than they would have if it was lit from overhead, essentially. It's a different way of lighting it that I just feel in a sign this shade... It's a, it's a different way of lighting it that I, I just feel in a sign this shape and in this location with this design and stuff, it doesn't lend itself to having the overhead lights. My, my purpose is to make sure that the lighting is, is even and clean and clear and not overly bright so that people coming from both directions can see it as far away as possible. The crest of that hill is terrible. I mean, where I lived in Goffstown was the adjacent of Glen directly behind that. So, every single day, I was going by the YMCA and people were pulling out of there. And at night, it was particularly bad.
I have a question about the LED light. Just a second.
If the safety issue of the sign is so that people can see it before they get to the entrance, then why isn't the sign put further down your property towards the Manchester line? So that they, there's a sign there that says that the entrance is a hundred or five hundred feet ahead of you?
That's a good, good question. The, the visibility coming up the hill isn't really the problem. It's more coming up over the top of the hill is the problem. And the way this is positioned now, I believe it's in between the, the two driveways, one going in, one going out. So, it clearly delineates where that entrance is and gives people as much possible notice as possible to turn in there.
It also would be not visible from the other side at all if you do that.
Yeah, the Goffstown side of the entrance.
If it's at the top where it is, at the crest, you're getting visibility from both sides. But if you move it to one side, then you wouldn't get visibility on the other side.
Then you need another side on the other side.
You'd need another side on the other side, right.
Looks like we have another sign on the other side. But anyway, that was the question that I asked and I certainly got your answer. Thank you very much. And did you have a question, Joe?
Right.
Yeah, the parking sign. Coming up the hill. She's making the point.
Talking about the west side parking area sign.
So, as far, as far as the choice in lighting, what, what are the benefits of the LED projecting, you know, perpendicular to the road as opposed to what's currently there with the fluorescent lighting coming from the top?
Well, currently, it is perpen, it is perpendicular to the road anyway.
Right.
But the benefit is, is that being backlit, and, and I, I've made recommend, strong recommendations both directions. I think that if it's a certain type of sign, I did this after Twisted Fender in the middle of town and, and for the insurance agency, the burden, Gordon F. Burns Agency and all of those, those are all externally illuminated. And it's because of the type of sign. It's a carved sign and it's made to look a certain period and a certain type of sign. This sign, where with the mark, the target market for the YMCA is families and it's youth. And we want something that's very clean and very modern and shows everybody at the YMCA keeping up with times. So, we've adopted the standards, the, the national standards and incorporated them into a design that we feel is appropriate for the property. And the LEDs just work better from, they're evener, they're not as bright as the fluorescents. That was why my choice.
Now, when it's backlit, does the, the LED light project much further than, like, you know, a direct light would?
Much less actually, because the way these are, this is configured is the LEDs are actually not directly behind the plexiglass. They're around the perimeter of the plexiglass. And so, they actually shine in towards each other. So, what you get is you get the illumination of the sign face without a lot of light pollution.
So, you're not going to get...
It doesn't project.
You're not going to get to a point where something like, you know, there's a, you know, a direct light beam in your face?
Correct.
So, can I ask you this? Did the YMCA come to you first and ask you if you had any ideas on a new sign? Did they come to you first?
This is actually the fifth location I've done for them, this one. And, and what we've done is for each location, we've done what we felt was appropriate. And like I said, this is exactly what we did in Portsmouth because it really worked out perfectly there and also in Londonderry.
Do you have like a contract with YMCA in general?
No.
Okay. So...
I wish.
Do you go around to the different YMCA's and suggest to them that these might be signs they will consider because of the location?
I don't think that's relevant.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was just trying to, I'm just trying to see what the relationship is here.
In Portsmouth, when you said it worked out perfectly, was it abutting any residential areas?
It did actually, yes. There's, there's actually a very large farm that it abutted. And it was about three hundred feet from the, the edge of the farm. And we haven't had any complaints about it. As my, they didn't show, they sent a letter, but they never showed up at the meeting to, to argue about it.
Can I ask you, when these signs went up, when, when, when did you get the permit for new sign?
I did not do those signs.
Does, does anybody know?
When they were done?
Yeah. No, you don't.
Check his file.
They've been there for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
If I can ask a question about the sign itself.
Do you have a question?
I think we're at the message board portion of the sign. They say internally illuminated. Does this include, is this going to be electronically programmable, changing the message?
No, it's...
Changing the message board, so we're not dealing with programmable LEDs?
Putting letters on.
It's actually individual letters that go on it. And the ben, the perfect, the purpose of incorporating this sign was because the YMCA normally puts out an A-frame to do this with changeable copy on it, where they put out special event signs. And what we want to do is eliminate the necessity to put out temporary signs for the camp registrations and things like that, the events that they have.
So, we're, we're not dealing with the issue that we have in a number of other cases. And we're talking about scrolling programmable or anything else. This is going to be manually changed sign board?
That's correct.
Yeah, this sounds like it's, well, we'll deliberate after.
I don't think anyone uses those anymore.
Uh, we do a lot of them. I mean, I'm not a big fan of electronic signs. And most of my customers find that out when they, when they tell me they want to put a big electronic sign. I'm like, really? Are you sure? Let's look at different options. So, I'm not a big fan of them. I've built them for customers before. But I, I just think where this is in the neighborhood like it is, it gets the idea of a message out there. It allows them to advertise that Camp Martinez is having registrations right now and things like that. And daily and weekly, it can give a message to people going by. And hopefully, it'll help from a marketing perspective, people that don't even know the types of things that the YMCA provides, the type of events.
Gail has a question.
Yeah. Vivian had asked about the Portsmouth YMCA, but you said you also did the Londonderry sign?
Yes.
Is that a residential area?
I have no idea, to be honest with you. It was a permissible sign there and...
Because it's, it's not, I, I mean, I don't know what the zone is there.
Yeah.
But it's on, is it bypass twenty-eight or...
It's, it's right on twenty-eight, yeah.
Something like that. It's on one of their very main roads in Londonderry, very busy road that has a lot of businesses versus the residential this year now.
Right. No, we did not need a variance for that sign. It was a permissible sign there. And we replaced one that had external illumination on it there with the same sign that we have here.
All right. If we have no further questions of the applicant, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this?
I, I think Scott has already said.
Okay. You're all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Then we're just going to ask you to take a seat.
Thank you.
To others that are here and probably invite you back to respond to some of their statements. Probably. Okay. Now, are there any butters here that would like to speak to this issue? Yes, if you'd like to come up and...
Yeah, can we see the copy of the sign too?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Are you going to want us to come up here? Yeah, I would like to.
Jean Walker, one-eleven Goffstown Road.
I just want one, one of a butter at a time.
One at a time.
One at a time, please.
I know a lot of history about the YMCA. More history than I would ever like to know.
References if you'd like.
Yeah. I...
And here, Jean Walker?
Jean Walker, one-eleven Last Town Road. And...
Could you show us on, as in a butter? Could you show us on this?
Sure.
On this?
You want to point to me?
Uh, I am right here. Because this is, this is...
This is the main entrance here?
Yeah. Okay, I am right about here.
So, you're on this property here?
Mm-hmm.
She lives on this property. Right across the street from A.
From A, yeah.
On this one?
Yeah. She's right here.
This is, um... Oh, okay. This is zoned agricultural. And we have worked very hard to try to keep it the rural look with the corridor being the rural corridor that comes into the center of town. There's conservation land, there's open space and farming done in that area. With these signs that are going to be five times larger than what is permitted for a conventional sign and illuminated, this is definitely going to affect this neighborhood and the neighbors. I noticed they mentioned safety. Well, that has been a huge issue. As everyone knows, that entrance is totally unsafe. It came through here, the line of sight is poor. It is so unsafe that it is the only place in town that has a blinking yellow light other than the school and the fire departments. And that includes Penonville. It seems that if they have a sign with words to be read on it, that to me would lead to a bigger safety issue than just having a sign. If they want to be a business, then maybe they should be taxed like a business. If they want to put all this light up there and they want to be commercial, why not? We know about lights, well, we know about lights really well because we are across from the parking lot. And we have the headlights that come out every night. They face us. And we are still waiting for the trees to grow that were planted for our Green Prince. And it's been five years now. And we do, and we now also have the yellow blinking light that blinks our way. I've been to DPW a couple of times asking for shield on the side to see if that could kind of prevent it, which in the summer, we have a few leaves. The other thing that I was wondering about too is I couldn't find anywhere in my notes or minutes where any signs were grandfathered. I don't know how they get to be grandfathered. Those were not original signs here because that's a new entrance way. And signs that are replaced that are non-conforming, if you look at six-point-nine-point-three in the zoning that states that a non-conforming signs that are replaced or destroyed shall only be replaced with a sign that is conforming. Also, as you guys all know, six-point-nine-point-one, no non-conforming sign may be enlarged or altered in structure or materials in any way which increases its non-conformity. And that's definitely making these more non-conform than they were. You also have six-point-four-point-seven, six-point-five, and six-point-five-point-one that all deal with these type of signs. Myself personally, I strongly oppose to a sign that is going to be illuminated. You're going to go up and down the back road and there are no illuminated signs. And there should be no sign that would track any driver going by that entrance way for safety purposes if nothing else. Because there is no way that anybody should stop or even hesitate to try to look to read a thing. I know, I've been working on the roundabouts. The town does not want any signs in top of the roundabouts because they are afraid people will be distracted. You have the same right there. I really can't think of... We do put up with a lot of lights. And this is just one more illumination. And we will see this from our house, from the side, even though they said nobody will see it. We will see it. But I, I feel that they've had a lot of accidents that they themselves should be concerned about putting something up that would distract a driver to read. Doesn't even make sense. Why would you want to have your drivers reading a sign when you've already had accidents there? Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes!
I have a question.
You can tell.
And it is ner, it, it is, it is nerve-wracking. They had mentioned that the, the operations of the sign, I believe presently, is at five-fifteen in the morning till ten PM at night. Ten-thirty at night. Excuse me. Did, does, when that light goes on that exists now?
My neighbor can absolutely speak to that since they're right across. I can speak to the parking lights that are on and off.
But okay, so let's speak to the neighbor, I know that is here regarding the, those lights being on because they are across the street?
Right across from those lights.
Okay.
Right across from those lights.
I have a...
Yes.
I have a question. As far as safety goes, I, I've been a resident in Goffstown for just twenty years now. If, and I've noticed that they do put signage out there, pop-up signs that, that are low to the ground. I've noticed traffic slowing down for people to identify what's on those signs.
Yes.
This sign sounds like it's going to be more visible and, and, and in the same spot. Do you think that this sign might be actually providing a safer way for people to identify what messages they're trying to get out to the public as opposed to those little sort of hard-to-distinguish signs?
I don't think they were supposed to be putting those little signs out either.
I was just going to ask that question. Are they...
I don't think those signs are... I don't think those signs are supposed to go out.
They're not free, they're not...
They're A-framed.
They'd be considered just another freestanding sign.
Freestanding sign.
And you're only supposed to have one per lot.
One per lot.
So, this actually...
Well, there shouldn't be anything that they, any driver would have to slow down to read because it, it's really a very hazardous place right there. There is no line of sight unless people are really aware. Even with the blinking light, it's...
Won't this be safer than those, those signs that they have been doing?
No, I don't think so. I think it would still cause people to slow down and try to read them. Because then they would be expecting to read it every day. So, you have more people thinking there's something there to read. So, I do, I do think it's, can definitely be a safety hazard. Yes.
Yes, Vivian?
Jean, I, I remember, I recall you asking for the trees to be placed so that you wouldn't have it shine in your mirror, in your window at night. And they agreed to do that.
They did agree to do that?
And then they, they, it came up that the trees were, bushes were kind of small.
They were very small.
And, you know, could they make, give us, would they give you larger trees?
They could have, they could have been much more agreeable.
And, yeah, they, they agreed they would do something, but it's been five years now.
Well, the tree, their trees are there, but we're still waiting for them to grow.
Okay.
They, well, they, and we were told that it was a twenty-year process.
Miracle grow.
Miracle grow.
And I do remember, I do remember you...
Do you remember that?
Yes.
That was the only thing we asked for was that trees try to keep the lights because...
All right.
Okay.
I didn't know that they were still growing.
They're small. They were small. Any other questions? I'm sure there are other people ready to speak.
Okay, now that we've heard from Mrs. Walker, yes?
Norm Brew, now they're right across the street.
Oh, you're the mayor.
Maybe within seventy feet of the sign.
Of the main entrance?
Of the main, of the main entrance. It faces my, my driveway.
Okay, then maybe...
I agree with Jean that there should be no message board up there. As you come up from Goffstown, there's a fairly good hill, okay? And as they come from Manchester, they meet at the top of the hill. And that's where their entrance is. And that's where their entrance is. If, if, if there's any slowing down of traffic, it's going to be, cause a traffic problem. I agree there should be a light there. They have a nice sign now with very subdued light. But what's going to stop the traffic is that yellow light they just put up. And as far as the trees, not to change the subject. The trees were put up, I admit, I admit, no, they, they put some money into putting trees up. But 20%, 25% of them are dead. They turned brown, they cut them down, and there's been no attempt to replace those trees. But it is, it is a bad, the entrance should never have been put there.
They stated earlier that the lights go on on the existing sign, I do believe, at 5:15 in the morning and 10:30 at night.
Yes, I guess, I guess that's the time, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Are they, do they affect you? I mean, do you...
To a certain degree, but what affects us the most are the cars coming out of the, of their parking lot. And, because there, those lights shine right in our family room. Every single car that comes out. But it's, it's something that we've learned to live with.
Yes, Vivian.
You've lived there a long time, Mr. Prue.
Yeah, about 40 years.
Could I ask you, is there any other justifiable way they could have put the entrance less on the crest?
Well, there were several proposals, and I would refer you to the minutes, those meetings. There was a proposal by the fire department to bring the entrance behind the Y. Use the old entrance and bring it around. There were several proposals, but this is one that was agreed on.
Okay, that's it, I'll tell you what.
I just want to ask if we should be just asking about the signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's why I wondered.
Yeah. Okay. What do you feel about an illuminated sign, Mr. Prue? An internally...
If it's, I have no problems with an illuminated sign. I do have problems with a message board. As long as the lumen rating of the illuminated sign is approximately the same lumen rating as the present sign.
Equal to the present sign's illumination?
Yeah. What, what would be the lumen rating? Okay, I'm sorry.
We'll ask that question when they come out.
That's fine, but we'll ask that question for you. Okay, is there any, anybody have any other questions for Mr. Prue? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Prue. Thank you for clarifying some of those issues for me. And I remember, was your name Rita?
I'm the other half.
And what is it? Oh, yeah.
Rita.
Yeah, Rita Prue.
Okay, oh, okay.
My driveway faces the entrance to the Y. We've been there since 1970. And we've tried to live in agreement with the Y. We have never complained about the things going on. But things are forever changing in our neighborhood. When we moved there, it was just trees. And now it's becoming a commercial zone. And we're not happy with all the lighting that is taking place. Especially the lights of the cars when they leave the parking lot. They aim right into our family room. So if I'm sitting in my favorite chair watching the TV, I have lights in my face all evening. Now, when, five years ago, when they proposed this new parking lot...
Excuse me. I hate to, I hate to stop you from discussing this, but we're here to discuss the signs.
Okay.
And if you are going to go and discuss issues about the parking lot and why it's not, why you don't like it, and why you don't like the cars coming out, that's not really on topic.
No, but the cars have lights, right? And the sign has lights.
Right, okay, so if you can wrap it together, that's great.
I think the sign that they currently have is very adequate. I can live with that.
Okay.
But if they erect a sign with a message board, this is a very dangerous area. Getting in and out of our driveway is very difficult and very risky. And we hear the brakes being applied all the time for cars going into the Y or exiting from the Y. So I can't see putting a message board which would add a further distraction.
Good point. Does anyone have any questions, Mrs. Prue?
No.
Well, thank you very much for coming up here and...
Thank you.
Stay in the air.
Thank you.
There's an abutter. Nobody, nobody else? Okay. Those are the abutters. Are there any other interested parties here that would like to speak to this application? There being none, is there any additional information or comments that the applicant would like to make regarding this?
I have no further comment.
We do have the question about the lumens, if we can ask that.
Do you know what the present amount of light...
I know what you're asking.
Yeah, the illumination.
And essentially, what we have in there now is four fluorescent bulbs there. And I'm not sure what the lumen output on that is. I, I'm pretty sure the lumen output on the LEDs is a little bit less, but I can provide that information. But I think that the more appropriate look is that for, instead of having lights shining down on it, which are ineffective and only light in the top half of the sign with light pollution because of the spillage and whatnot, and you see them, we're containing the light inside it. And it's, it's a matter of opinion. It's a matter of which you prefer to look at and which you prefer to use. And I felt that it's for safety purposes and maintenance purposes. And for those purposes, I felt it was the better route to go.
Okay. Thank you. Does that, do you think that clarified?
Well, I think the specific question that I wanted to address for the abutter was the lumens. But, I mean, it makes sense that such an old sign, they're not going to know the ratings on, on those lights that are in there now.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The applicant, when they were here, had just kind of asked me a question if I knew about what the setbacks were. For signs in the agricultural zone, there is technically not a setback listed in our ordinance. So I just wanted to let the board, the board know that, that that's what our ordinance says for setbacks for signs. If it was zoned commercial, it would have like a 10-foot setback.
Okay.
But in the agricultural zone, it doesn't have a specified setback.
The signs are allowed in the agricultural zone?
Right.
Okay.
I had a question for the applicant. Do you know what the size of the letters would be in the reader board area as compared to the size of the letters on the existing signs?
I think that what we've allowed for is, is a six-inch letter on there. I'm not, I don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it's a six-inch letter on that now. The existing sign there now, you know, if we're talking about, about the ability of the driver to get the message quickly, a couple of things are happening here. This, this old YMCA sign has all this information on it, which is in very small text. Here, what we're banking on is that the Y is a recognizable symbol and that the word "the" and YMCA over here is going to become pretty insignificant. They're going to tell very, very quickly that it's the YMCA. And messages are, by limitation of space, fairly small. And, and the only other point that I want to correct on is that, that this sign is actually only three times the square footage of the existing sign, or the allowable sign, excuse me, not five times. And it's actually about the same size as what's there now. So that was all taken into consideration when we did the design work.
Why, or would it, why, would it be possible to put a message board sign on the, on the existing sign?
My fear is that then you've got a lot of small lettering on, on that sign, and it is going to be more difficult to read.
How wide is the existing sign?
It's eight feet wide.
And how wide is the proposed sign?
Let's see, we should have one in here with dimensions on it, I believe. Yeah, the existing sign is eight feet wide also. It's going to be in the exact same footprint as the existing.
So the...
So it's less than eight feet tall, it's 90 inches tall, which makes it slightly shorter than the one that's there now, and it's the exact same width.
Okay, and what is the height of the one now?
It's about eight feet high. And this one's 90 inches, just a little bit shorter than the existing one.
Yeah, it's about seven and a half feet.
Yes.
Versus eight feet. So you're, you're a half a foot in height less.
Yeah.
And you're the same across, across.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
And the reader board is actually narrower than the existing sign.
Is there a size of the letters in the sign industry that is deemed to be safe to read going by at, you know, whatever the speed limit is out there?
Well, nobody does the speed limit there anyway.
Forty miles an hour or whatever it is.
There, there's a whole chart. And it's impacted by the, the contrast that you have in the letter style, whether it's a sans serif letter style or a fancier letter. It's impacted by all those things, and there's definitely an entire chart that specifies that. By virtue of the fact that it's a changeable copy sign, it's going to be a square letter. It's, it's, you know, basically just a very, very clean, straight letter. And you've got a good contrast, so the message can be read as quickly as possible. And once again, we're, we're not really adding any more text to this. We're simply kind of changing the focus of it, making it clearer and faster to read and more effective from a signage point of view.
I have another question or clarification. I guess I could come to that conclusion, but I think it should be on record. The existing sign with the fluorescent lights at the top?
Yes.
Those lights are at the very top of the sign?
Mm-hmm.
Which is about eight feet high. The new sign, the light, the lit part with the white, the white light?
Yeah.
That part, I, is what, five feet high?
I don't think it's even quite that high. I think it's more like four feet. Let me just get my measurements again.
So it's, it's half as high as the...
Yeah, it's, it's about half as high as the, the overall sign. The message center will be down lower, and just the logo will be up, up higher.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much for being there.
Thank you.
Did I understand him to say that this same sign is in Portsmouth?
Mm-hmm.
It is on Pebley Hill Road. It's the exact same dimensions, fabrication.
And it's lit the same way as the sign?
Want to take a look at it?
I would like to see a photograph of it and the area around it. I don't know that I'm going to drive out to Portsmouth, but...
You want to continue the hearing?
I think so.
Okay. Do you know the address?
I just want to take a field trip. I'm up for it.
It's a meeting if more than three go. Not a sudden.
That's okay. We can have a party.
We can put two in a car. Right now, we have a nonconforming sign up there for the conforming. I believe it's a nonconforming sign, remember?
That's right.
Okay.
And the sign they want to put in now is bigger?
Also nonconforming.
So isn't it, is there a rule or is it just for the property that you're in?
6.9.3?
Is there a, 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 that you cannot expand a nonconforming?
But they're taking it away, so you can't go...
If a nonconforming sign is removed or destroyed, it shall only be replaced with a reconstructed sign that conforms to the provision of the ordinance.
That's why they're asking for the variance.
Yeah.
But you can't replace a nonconforming sign with a more extreme nonconforming.
No, a nonconforming sign may be enlarged or altered in structure or materials in any way which increases its nonconformity.
That, that's why they're here right now.
Yeah, they have the variance.
Right, right, I know that.
I'd also like to see photographs of what these signs look like at night. And exact dimensions. On the old ones, too.
On the old ones.
High...
I think it would be nice to take a look at the sign, to see a sign that's exactly like the sign's going to be instead of looking at the...
Where was it in Portsmouth?
Pictures.
Why?
Have it on here. You haven't posted it yet. Oh. Yes, Jean?
Could I ask you guys to take a field trip there?
That's what I think we should do.
That's what we're just...
It's on...
Pebley Hill Road.
I don't know where that is.
That's where? Oh, I know where that is.
Pebley Hill Road.
I know where Pebley Hill Road is.
What is it?
It's in a commercial area, it's in a commercial district.
Pebley Hill Road.
Well, there's, you know, a groomer and there's other...
Yeah, but it will show you, it will show you that the sign looks like. And then what you need to do is take that visual sign look and see if that visual sign is possibly something that you think might fit in this location.
It's mostly a commercial zone.
Right, right.
I thought by Pebley Hill.
Right.
I feel like the picture gives me enough to go on.
I know, Joe. How did I know you were going to say that, Joe? Joe, you were like...
Yeah, Pebley.
Visualizing.
P-E-D.
P-E-D-R-L-Y.
E-R-L-Y.
E-R-L-Y.
Hill.
Road. Yeah. In a minute, so we can all put it on our map. All right, so apparently the left-hand side of the boardland over there are thinking about continuing.
That's funny, because I'm usually on the left-hand side of things, but...
So, oh, excuse me. I'm going to keep the public hearing open. And do I hear a motion to continue this? For, for until the September 10th meeting, which will enable members of the board to physically examine the existing signs?
Did he say this was also in Londonbury? The same exact sign, same size, everything?
I think the concern more is the, the location of the sign.
Well, I think...
That's why they were saying Portsmouth. Because Portsmouth, it is in residential area, an agricultural area, excuse me, which, which abuts a commercial area. But if you, if you look at Pebley Hill Road there, it's farmland right there.
I believe, well, we, we will. We will take a look at it and possibly... Are we going to go tonight? We're going to go at night? Well, it's 10:10, we could all zip, no, and...
We have to go for dinner.
Dinner.
Do you want to go to the what, to Londonbury?
Sure.
Where in Londonbury is it?
Going the way back.
In Londonbury?
Kind of like near Exit 5.
I don't know where that is.
You can take it right, and it's just down the road a little ways.
Exit 5 and to the right, is that right? The directions would be Exit 5 and to the right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just there, too. I didn't notice the sign. But there you go.
There you go.
That being the case where members...
There's a lot of construction going on right there.
All right. That being the case.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue to September 10th.
For the reason of...
Field trip.
Enabling the members of the...
And, and for additional information.
Which one is?
Size and maybe lumens, if we can get that.
Of the existing and of the proposed? Sounds good.
Yeah. And also enable us to view what the sign looked like.
View the site.
And do the sites.
And the addresses will be in the minutes and...
They will. I don't have them.
Oh, you didn't write them down?
No, they, they weren't provided.
It's not necessary for the address to be in the minutes. We can work out the details of a site visit if the board wants to go on one.
Okay.
And how to get there and all of that. It doesn't have to be in, in the minutes.
Okay. Is the, sometimes on sidewalks, public are invited? I know that I've been on sidewalks, the public have attended.
We've been on sidewalks.
So...
If, if the board wants to hold a sidewalk, we would post it as a meeting and it would be available to the public.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we cover all bases.
If the, if the members of the board don't want to hold a specific meeting of, like a, where everybody gets together, but you all want to take a journey out on your own to go see the signs as they exist at night, then that wouldn't be a notice public meeting and, you know, the public wouldn't necessarily be involved, invited to that.
Right.
We can take that Y bus and put us all in there.
You, you are bus waiting.
I'm only kidding.
Okay, so, all right.
I would say that we should each go at our own convenience rather than to try to accommodate all of us. And it saves the notice as well.
I, I agree with that. Do you agree with that?
No.
You want to go with the...
You can still pair up, but if you don't have a quorum...
We have a, we have a motion on the floor.
What if we do have a quorum?
No, it's not.
If we do have a quorum.
Well, you don't, you may not...
I'll, I'll save, I think I'd rather save, we vote on the motion, I'll save my comment for, you know, when we're voting on the motion, because...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
The motion on the floor is to have a sidewalk?
Visit. Site visit.
A site visit by the board as a, as a...
No, we're not going to go all by the board.
Okay, well, let's get the motion in order. What is the, the motion is?
The motion is at the convenience of the members of the board.
Okay. So we don't have to all be together?
Right, correct.
Is there a second on that?
She just did.
You seconded it, okay, okay. Discussion?
I think we're getting way too deep into the minutia of signage. This is yet another signage case that's going to be for us. And, you know, I think we're belaboring things to a point where it's counterproductive. Technologies evolve, signage evolves. Some of the more modern signs that I've seen seem to me like they threw off a... I would be comfortable in voting on the thing tonight. I think that, you know, the information before us, uh... I worked for a place that had a brand-new sign put in. The old thing, it's the clam shack syndrome, the old-style sign here that are probably from the last, um, you know, thirty, twenty, thirty years ago. I, I, I just think, you know, we, we delve too deeply into the minutia of it. Uh, I think we can make an adequate decision based on what's before us and I, you know, I just don't think a continuance is necessary.
And I would normally agree with you. Except that this is not in a commercial zone. There are, it's in an agricultural zone and there are residents nearby and once, I, I need to see it firsthand in order to determine, at least in my opinion, whether it's going to have an impact on the neighborhood, because once we allow one, you're going to see more people coming in on the back road. And so before we turn the back road into something different than it is now, I think we really need to do our homework.
And, and I, I take your point. I understand your point, but-
It's a very good point.
I feel signage has turned into a bugaboo for this board.
If this was in a commercial zone, I would totally agree with you.
I think, um... It's, in my opinion, it's similar to an application that was continued another time and it was in a residential zone. They were gonna put an internally illuminated light and I brought up the issue of hardship and that I felt that it didn't meet hardship. And one of the things that I sometimes think we do is we kinda go on our feelings of these applications instead of addressing the criteria and seeing how well they meet them. And, um, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria, no matter how much we might like the idea or not, um, then it shouldn't be approved. And, um, I think that's what, I think that's the, the path that we need to go on.
Okay, is there any other comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? That being said, all those in favor say-
Can I, this is, how does the vote, can we get a restating of the motion so we know which way?
Wait a minute, let me get it.
The load is?
Joanne made the motion to continue till September tenth to enable the ZBA to do a sidewalk at the convenience of the board so that they could view other sites with the same signs and obtain additional information such as the lumens of the existing and proposed lighting.
At the convenience of each board member, I would say.
Yeah, the sidewalk at the convenience of each board member.
Of the board members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of each board, because we're not gonna go as a unit. Okay, so, all those in favor of going to look at the sign and continue the me, to continue the meeting so they can go look at the sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
The motion carries three, two. We will be visiting the signs and, um, back on September. See whether or not the members are for or against this application. And we thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And have a good Labor Day weekend, 'cause we're not gonna see anybody before Labor Day.
Summer's over.
Bet you never know. Okay, you want-
I need the last one.
This is scout days.
Well, I guess we wouldn't have known.
They won't come out.
'Cause I know you always go see the-
But we didn't know where the location was at the other, at the other sign. So, hanging in there, Joe, how do you like the votes?
Hello, the what?
I like the voting so far.
Well- I like it, but I feel like, you know, we get-
Yeah, well, we're, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Really? Come on, it's ten o'clock. Let's keep going.
I'm taking a five-minute break. Glenn excused himself. I'm taking a five-minute break, Glenn excused himself. Good evening and welcome back to the zoning board administrative monthly meeting of August. The next application and the final application of the evening, it's Mike Gallo at Applicant, and Harvey J. Dupoint Family Trust owners are seeking a special exception to build a single-family home on an existing non-conforming lot that does not meet the minimum frontage requirements. Section 1473 of the Goss Town zoning ordinances states that development of a non-conforming may be allowed by special exception if it can meet the conditions of that section. The property is located on Danus Park Road, map six, lot 36-1-1, in the residential one district. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, yeah, I'm seeking a special exception to build on this lot with, it's short on frontage, does meet on area, and this was an approved subdivision in 1985, I believe, by Goss Town. And it's basically it.
Do you have any questions? Well, the question I had, and she has a different map, that's why we were talking, she's got a different, I couldn't find this piece of property, and, but, on her map it shows the three houses and a pool, whatever, just that I think it would have been a lot easier for me to find it, but over here it says just Danus Park Road, it gives the name of the people, but it was just impossible for me to really, I think if I would have had something like this with the designs of the houses and stuff, I would have said, oh, now I know where it's at.
I've got this little area map, if you want to see it.
Yeah, that's what she, oh, she, you don't have no address or anything.
It doesn't, the address that's given is what they call, it's referred to, but there's 114 Danus Park.
Right.
You go over the railroad, it's right here.
Oh, it's right after the railroad?
Yep.
All right. That's the only thing I was saying, it's just got a different map.
So it's short on frontage, but it goes all behind those other three lots?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's a lot of record?
It is a lot of record, and as he stated, I think it was approved in 1985, is that what it says on that plan there?
I believe so, yep.
So the criteria for the special exception is the same, there's not some other criteria in the ordinance for non-conforming, it's this criteria that's here?
Well, there's criteria listed in section 14, those are the criteria that we read.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Now they're looking up their section. It looks to me on the.
Yeah, 14.7.3.
Part of the vision statement? That you have some wetlands on this property?
Can I see what you're looking at?
No.
Okay. So he has to answer these, too?
These criteria are required, but.
Those are considered wetlands?
There wasn't a test pit done here? And there's a result on the plan to show that it would support the septic.
You know, if you list this.
Have you been to the conservation commission on this at all?
No.
Okay.
So this is from 85, that's from.
And you want to build a single-family home?
Yes.
What's the size of the lot?
It's 2.47 acres, 2.42 acres.
Just one home?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, Joanne's question was regarding the non-conforming lot and the frontage requirements, and if there are any other criteria. Section 14.73 is the one we read earlier about developing a non-conforming lot, and that does have four criteria on it. This, these criteria are met by this proposal, so the first one, it says, the lot has frontage on an accepted street, or the zoning board of adjustment has granted a permit, and so on and so forth, to build a structure on a lot which has no frontage on an accepted street. Well, it does have frontage, so it meets that criteria.
Okay.
Such lot, the second one is such lot as of the original adoption of this ordinance on March 14th, or applicable amendment there, too, is held under separate ownership from the adjoining lots, or has been made non-conforming since that time. None of the adjacent lots are owned by Mr. Gallo.
Correct.
So, and also, I believe in the records of this, there wouldn't be any evidence that it was held under Mr. Gallo's name, or in separate ownership from adjoining lots. The third one, the proposed use of the non-conforming lot conforms to the front, side, and rear yard requirements, and to the maximum building coverage requirements. So the proposal that you have in front of you shows a lot, a house, a dotted line that locates where the house would be on the lot. That's a little square dotted box there, that's the proposed construction of the 36 by 30, right there.
What is this line?
That's a lot line. So that splits two lots, that and that, yep.
So he's just looking at this lot?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, the house is within the setbacks, and the building is well within the building coverage requirements that we have, so it meets that criteria. And then the fourth one, where developments proposed on a non-conforming lot, abutting another lot or lots in the same ownership, these lots shall be consolidated as necessary to eliminate non-conformity to the maximum extent possible, and proof of that consolidation shall be filed with any application for a permit for development of the lot. After that time, a consolidated lot, if still non-conforming, shall continue to have the same rights of use as other non-conforming lots as provided in this section. This would ask if there is ownership that is the same of lots next to each other, that the lots be consolidated, but there is no same ownership next to it, so that one's really not applicable.
Does Mr. Gallo own this lot right now?
No, I'm buying it subject to getting this permit.
It's hard to tell from all of this, but it looks like these dashed lines are the edge of the wetland?
It's the different, the ones that come through the middle of the property?
Yes.
It's the different soils.
So, looking at this other tax card map, do you need to cross through any of those wetlands with your driveway? That's what it looks like.
It's, I have to, once I get out there and identify the actual property lines, I'll be able to tell that more, it's kind of tricky to see exactly where the property lines are once you get out there, so I haven't completely identified that yet.
Because even though the lot, from what I'm reading, it looks like the lot was a lot of record prior to 1993, it still doesn't get you around the fact that if you're crossing into a wetland, you still need approval by, I believe, our conservation commission, and for sure, the New Hampshire.
I know the state, I would, so I would have to get that through you guys as well.
About our conservation, do they look at dredge and fills, they have to sign off on it?
If you're impacting the wetland, then yes, but because, like you said, the lot doesn't have the wetland setback, because it was prior to 1993, as long as, if he were to design something that totally traverses the wetland, for example?
Well, it would, with the driveway.
Right, so if it totally traverses and didn't impact the wetland at all, then he may not need that approval.
Well, I think that would be something that I'd like to hear from the conservation commission.
Yeah, me too.
I think I'd like, I really do, and that's why I brought up the wetlands, but we'll continue with the public hearing now, because there are people here that do want to speak, so until we move it forward, I guess, that's probably going to be the direction I'm looking at. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Gallo? Okay, thank you very much. I have a question. Oh, of Mr. Gallo?
No, no, just throwing it out there. This wouldn't go to the planning board, would it?
Only because, again, the Wetland Surface Water Conservation District is only for properties that have been, or lots that have been created after 1993. There is no Wetland Surface Water Conservation District on the property.
Wetland buffers that were established, the 50-foot wetland buffer.
But that's what I'm saying, those don't apply, because this lot existed prior to that rule.
But if he's going in with the driveway through that wetland, that's a different story.
Okay. All right, I know that, would you like to?
I think it's just a statement.
Mr. Wave your hand later.
Hi, I'm William Hart, 47 Danus Park Road. H A R T. Okay. 47 Danus.
And are you one of the neighbors or anything?
I am the abutter right next to it, on the, towards the riverside.
Okay, you 636-12 or 23 Danus?
I don't even have, can I take a look at what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
Where's the river?
These are, this is Danus Park.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, okay. This is my property here.
What number are you?
So he's the one, he's the other half of that drawing that you have.
Oh, okay, you're the one that we were talking about earlier. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so in looking at this.
So you have a long driveway, your house is right there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, mine would have but the opposite side, okay? So when you look at this, first of all, talking about wetlands, these wetlands move according to what time of year they are, they actually flow into my backyard in the spring. So they expand out almost 80% of this piece of property in the springtime, and then they receive back. There is probably, roughly, you see the double dotted lines that come down like that? That is also the water flow coming out of there. So when it comes across, it comes right across the front of my yard, okay? Where he has to enter, the wetlands run right down to that point on the road. If you walk in, there's actually a small, I guess you'd call it retention type pond, where the water flows into it, you can step in and it's about six feet deep during the springtime.
Oh, I can't step in that.
No, without swimming, no.
You would drown in that.
What's that?
It's not a varnail pool, is it?
Not that I know of, no. So, to come in in that direction, that whole entrance piece right here is all water from one end right to the other side, so you would have to, to put in a driveway, you would have to cross that no matter what. And then back to where he's proposing the house, the wetlands are going to actually run into that, they actually almost go back to the stone wall on the backside, which is where the county property is, within 10 to 15 feet of that in the springtime. I've been there eight years, and I've seen that water flow back there six out of the last eight. So, as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, looking at it, wetlands are where they are at full peak, and to build in there, you're going to be building your foundation right in the water.
I think we have to go to conservation first and then come back.
Yeah. It says in his zoning ordinance, uses permitted, roads or driveways for crossing wetlands in this district, provided that there is no other alternative development plan that will further minimize impacts to the wetlands and the wetlands district.
Well, I don't, I.
Section 13.3.6.8. But I think he, I think he needs to.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we should just focus on the driveway issue, I think we need to focus on the total wetland issue, which would include, which includes the driveway area.
Well, and I agree, it's just that he doesn't have to meet the setbacks according to the ordinance because of the age of the lot, but if there's, you know.
If I may.
Issues with the drainage or something because of the wetland, then that would make sense.
Now, if I remember correctly, if you subdivide a lot, or you change a lot, it's changed from the date of the change, correct?
Correct.
Which would be in 1995.
That's when it was subdivided?
That's when it was subdivided, because that's when my house was built, was sold and built.
So this plan here, I don't know really what this is, it says subdivision land of Jeffrey White, this is dated 1985.
Yeah. So that, these two pieces of land together were also part of the original Danus house. So this was all one big piece, and it had been subdivided back in the 70s, this piece, and then subdivided in 95, or split in half.
In 95?
In 95.
So this big piece here.
Was one big piece that they split into two.
This line was added in 95?
Yes.
So that's after 93?
Right.
So then it does have to come. I think we need more information.
I think they got to go to conservation first, before you even think of anything else, I think.
Because this is only, first of all, this isn't even signed, I don't know what this is, to tell you the truth.
All right, so, all right. If there are no further questions, I'd like to have the other person, oh, you don't want to come forward, you don't want to join us?
I am, I know.
Okay. So wait, can I just ask him another question? Because now this is conflicting, so this plan shows two lots in 1985, but you're saying that never occurred?
This, it was on the original plans to have it done, but it wasn't subdivided until 95.
When you mean subdivided?
It was sold as a separate piece of land for this house to be built in 95.
Okay, so sold, sold and subdivided are two very different things, though.
Okay.
If you.
I mean, obviously, if it's one piece, it has to be subdivided to be able to sell a piece of it, right?
If they recorded a plan in 1985 that subdivided these two, then they were current lots of record as of that date, whenever it got recorded, then if they sold it later, and it was developed.
Okay.
That's not necessarily the same thing as creating a new lot at that point in time, it would have been already created and then just sitting vacant for 10 years or whatever.
Is this the exact formation of this, of this land? There wasn't anything else that happened after this?
Not that I know of, Joanne.
That's how it appears on our, on our G I S records currently, and that's, that's what it looks like on that plan. That seems to be consistent.
What property cards say?
Now, the other question I would have, too, is where this house is proposed, obviously there's no setbacks according to what you're saying.
From the wet.
From the wetlands, but there obviously must be some issue with where to put the septic system as well.
There was a test pit right there.
He had a test pit done, so we have to, has to be away from the water anyway.
Well, I guess my question would be then, when was that test pit dug, was it dug in the fall, or was it dug in the spring? That's number one, number two, how big is, you know, how big is the septic system and stuff like that, how is that impacting property lines?
That'd be part of the approval, when I did a septic design.
Excuse me, you're not supposed to speak right now. I prefer to keep order here. Those are good questions, I don't know if some of them are particularly under our jurisdiction, but I think that before we go forward with any more. Questions, definitive questions, we're going to, we're going to continue this probably, we're going to go look at signs and then have conservation look at this, they're going to comment back to us for our next meeting, and then I would assume that you would be back here, Mr. Gallo, of course, would be back here, whoever wants to be back here, and we'll continue the discussion after we know exactly what we're talking of and the character of this land in relationship to where, what's there with wetlands. And as far as when they survey the wetlands, whether it's a good time of the year or not a good time of the year, I've always heard from any wetland surveyor, it doesn't make a difference, because there are certain vegetation that exists when wetlands are there, and they not only look at damp areas, but they also look at the vegetation and the flora that's around there, that would also depict part of the wetland and the wetland boundary. So, I, when I would first, I too would say, no, you can't do it in the fall, do it in the spring, what are you kidding me? Then I was appeased by a wetland surveyor that said it doesn't make a difference what time of the season, that doing their survey, they don't look for just the water part of it, they do look at the flora part of it, too.
It says on the property card, the property is 2.43 acres, 1.43 is wet, so the 1.43 is assessed at a much lower rate due to it being wet.
Well, let's just see where they are. Okay, so do I have a motion to continue this application until the next meeting, and send it to conservation?
Yep.
Commission for.
Make a motion to continue this till the gentleman goes to the conservation commission and gets the approval, or?
I thought we sent it to the conservation commission for comment.
That's right. For review and comment, not for approval.
Yeah, for review and comment. Giving a specific date so that we don't have to renotice.
Okay, so we will send this to the conservation.
We're going to give them a specific date to come back, September 10?
Well, I can't give them that date, because if they're going to go for site walk, they may not be able to do it for September 10.
No, they have, they have 30 days that they're supposed to, no, I'm sorry, they may have 45 days, but even still, they have a meeting between now and the next meeting, so that, that's when they would take it up, they're not going to push it past that.
If they, if for any reason they can't get back to us, they, if they have a 45-day window and they can't get back to us by September 10th, we just continue until October, that's because that's our, that's the charge that we're giving the conservation commission. Gotcha, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallo, did you have anything else you'd further like to say to this board? Before we.
What about the other guy? So, is, so we have the motion to continue, it's not going to be till September, or it is?
Yeah, we're going to continue it, we're going to schedule it to be continued to the September 10th meeting, and request conservation to, to promise to act to us by, by the meeting if possible.
If not.
And if not, then we will continue the meeting till the October, because of the 45-day window.
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none.
Can anybody second that?
I did.
The motion carries 500, we will continue till September. Thanks, Mr. Gallo.
For correction on the record, it is 30 days, not 45.
Can I ask you a question about this, Plan Pinnardville?
As long as it's not.
No, no, it's just a quick question.
Not discussing the merits of the project.
No, no, no.
What, are the smart colors in?
They are in.
Are we able to see them, are they online?
Yes, they're online, I can also provide you copies, I have some extra ones upstairs if you would like to stop up and grab one on your way out, I can do that.
My only question was, is this still the final draft? Because I read something about something being changed, or?
It's never final until it's approved.
I mean, is it the most latest draft?
That's the latest draft.
Even, even though some things were changed?
Yeah, we haven't made actual changes based on any comments we've received yet.
Okay.
So, we'll do that near the end.
Okay.
Okay, with, I have no questions, but I'm asking. That being said, I don't think there was much in correspondence, there's always the town, the Hampshire Town and City publication, parks and recreation issue. And that being said, is motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 500, we are adjourned until September 10.